Okay, good morning. I'm gonna call our strategic plan Seal Beach City Council workshop to order. Thank you all for being here today. I appreciate everyone taking the time to spend their day here going over the last few months, all of our many accomplishments, celebrating that. We do have a number of challenges moving forward and so that'll be the hard part of the day, but I want to thank Carol and Steve for coming here and helping us with this process. Could we get the council roll call please?
Council member Moore.
Here.
Council member Calvert.
Here.
Council member Steele.
Here.
Mayor Hooton Landau. And Mayor Sisdarsen.
Here. Okay, we're gonna move on to oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding items on the agenda. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and the entire city council and not to any individual, member of the staff, or audience. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak today? Okay, seeing none, I'll close oral communications and I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Carol.
Before we start with Carol, we're gonna turn the meeting over to Jill.
Great.
No, it's my fault.
Good morning, everyone. As most of you know, we've been focused on strategic planning in this city for the past 12, almost 13 years now. We've had the great fortune to work alongside our partners, with management partners, and now Baker Tilly since March of 2020 to help guide us through this process. And so, want to welcome back Carol Jacobs. She'd be a familiar face for all of you. She was our lead consultant with last year's process. And Steve Alexander, although he shouldn't be a new face to you because he's with Baker Tilly and last year he was actually here observing, and he's now at the table and part of our process. And so, want to welcome both of them. The two of them, I can't say enough about the two of them. Well over 60 years of expertise and experience in public service. Both Carol and Steve have served as city managers working alongside elected officials, so they bring a lot of expertise, experience, and credibility to this process. So, want to thank both of you for being here. I know Shelley, you talked about all the work that it's taken to get here. I especially want to thank this council, as well as previous councils, who have continued to be invested in this process, understanding how important it is, the fact that it provides a foundation for us in terms of our work plan, as well as a foundation for our budget development process, which is already underway. And so, want to thank you for that. I know you've spent time in this process as well, each one of you having the opportunity to meet individually with Carol and Steve to provide your valuable input to get us started in terms of where we are today, and as well as your ongoing investment in this process and understanding that it provides our overall work plan, as well as guiding us through the budget process. So, thank you for that. I especially want to thank our executive management team. We've spent a significant number of hours and days and weeks since we initiated this process with Carol and Steve and since you had your individual interviews to really guide the framework for what we're gonna do here today. And that takes a lot of investment of our time. I especially want to say thank you to them, each one of them personally. And I know the council feels as blessed as I do. I mean, our team brings over 300, close to 400 years of expertise and experience to this profession, to this community. And we're all here because we want to be here. We care about this community as if it were our own. And each one of us, individually and collectively, working alongside of our teams every single day on behalf of this community. And we care for Seal Beach as if it were our own. And we work hard every single day to ensure that we're providing the best possible service and programs to this community. We're all forward-thinking, wanting what's in the best interests of our community and ensuring the viability and the long-term financial stability of this town. And I think it goes without saying how blessed we are, so I want to thank each and every one of you. Again, we've worked really hard over the last several weeks on this process so that we can hopefully have a productive day here, working alongside the five of you on behalf of our community. Also want to recognize other city staff, support staff that are here today. Captain Mike Ezra, I can't see him, but I know he's back there. Lieutenant Nick Bolin, our deputy public works director Catherine Cho, and our management analyst from the city manager's office Lauren Berich. And then I know Sean Temple, who's our planning manager, will be here at some point today as well. Goes without saying that none of this would be possible without the logistics and everything. I know it's a lot more than just agendizing a meeting and we all show up and sit at the table and it happens. There's so much that goes on behind the scenes to get us ready for today in terms of logistics. Matt and Tim, want to say thank you to you from SBTB3 for being here. They're audio recording the meeting. I know they're hearing me because they've got their headphones on. Audio recording today's meeting, which will pop up on the city's website for those in the community. We hope will be interested and want to engage and listen to today's meeting. So, Matt and Tim, thank you very much for that. As well as Deb Machin, my executive assistant, who really took care, made all of it happen and tied up all the loose ends, made sure that this room is set up, that we're all fed and happy. And everything that you're seeing in front of you really is a result of all the work that she's done, even over the weekend, to make sure that this is a successful day for us. So, Deb, thank you for being you. And with that, again, just in terms of why this process is important, I know from our team's perspective, and I know Shelley, you mentioned it as well, we've got a lot of challenges ahead. We've got a lot to celebrate. A lot of the work that we do, our team works so hard, day in and day out, on the city's behalf and alongside the five of you on behalf of this community. And so, really looking forward today that this is a productive, successful day and that we get strong directives moving forward as a result of this process. And so, with that, Carol, I'll turn it back over to you.
Well, thank you. It's always a pleasure to be here and I'm glad to be back. And like Jill said, this is gonna be a team effort today and we're gonna have a lot more discussion today than we did maybe last year. Talk about kind of council relationships, governance, leadership, what that means, what that means for you as council, what that means for you as executive team. We're gonna look at your accomplishments. You guys do an incredible amount of work with not so many resources. And it's really a testament to the team as to how you can get all of that work done. But there's also challenges, and we want to talk through those with you today and get some kind of direction. So, one of the things I want to make clear is, we're not voting today. This is a study session. This is consensus building, so that when you all kind of agree at the end of the day about what your priorities are, Jill will bring those back to you formally for a vote. So, this is not a vote, this is not in stone. This is us kind of building consensus with the team. We're gonna set some strategic priorities. We're gonna do it very differently than we did last year. And I'm hoping that it will help you clarify in your minds what's most important for you as a council member and for the community that we all serve. And we want to strengthen teamwork. Nobody works in a vacuum in local government. This is actually, it's a team effort and we want to make sure that we have a good team. And a lot of those times, the way we have a good team is that we know and understand each other. If we know something, a little bit about something, somebody, we have a better understanding and appreciation for maybe their point of view or where they're coming from. So, we want to do that. So, here's our agenda for the day. You're gonna listen to me for the most of the first half of the day, and then you get to listen to Steve for the second half of the day. We're gonna do a little icebreaker. I know you guys loved that icebreaker last year. We're gonna do a different one this year. So, we want to talk about governance and leadership and what that means in general, what that means for you here in Seal Beach. We're gonna talk about your accomplishments and challenges. We're gonna talk about priority setting. Kudos to Jill and your executive team for putting together a list of priorities and projects, things that we heard from you. The first thing we did was we listened to you, to the five of you, and what were your priorities and what was important to you? And then, we went to Jill and her staff and said, okay, you're the people, you're the boots on the ground. You know what's out there. What are some of your concerns and your priorities? And so, they gave us a list. So, the list you're going to see is a combination of all of your thoughts and the staff's thoughts. There's no names associated with them. You'll know what yours are, they'll know what theirs are, but it's all one big list. And you're gonna, we're gonna kind of force you to make some decisions. And there's a very specific reason we want to do that. We'll go through those top priorities. Jill will bring those back to you at a future date, and then we'll talk about Rappus. And we'll try to get you out of your head. All right, here's some ground rules. These things are really important for the day. We need to understand each other's points of view, even if we don't agree with it. It's okay to disagree. But if we can try to understand where somebody else is coming from, we're gonna be much more effective in making our decisions. We're gonna seek consensus. Can we agree? Last year, when we came, you're all, we're all happy, they're all new council members, everyone's getting along really cool, right? Word on the street is that's not quite the same anymore. And so, we want to think about that and talk about how, even if we disagree, how we can work together as a team. There is nobody in this room that doesn't want what's best for Seal Beach. I will guarantee you that. You live in this community and Jill said, you know, she treats this community as like her own. She treats this community better than the community that she lives in. She cares more about this community that she works in than the one she lives in. I know that was, I didn't know where my council members were where I lived, but I knew everything about the city I worked in, right? So, the time and effort that this team has put into this community speaks volumes about how much they care about it. And we always need to keep that in mind and assume that good intent. Sometimes people like to go down rabbit holes. We're gonna pause that and we're gonna bring that back. We have our bike rack, so if it's not something that we should be talking about in this meeting or not on the agenda, we'll put it on the bike rack and you can talk about it with Jill at a later time. But they can be important things. And we want to stay focused on our objective city. There's a lot of information to get through. Want to make sure that you all understand what we're doing. There's the bike rack? All right, here's the icebreaker. Are you ready? We're gonna give you a few minutes. Council people, you're gonna have to tell us these answers, because I think this is really important for you as a team to understand. What inspired you to serve on the council? I know it's the high pay. I know it's the high pay and the big benefit that you get, right? So, why would you dedicate hours and hours and hours of your time to this community for no pay and a lot of headaches? We want to know why. It's really important. What's your favorite thing about being on council? What about your service do you find the most satisfying? What's that thing when something happens and you go, oh, I did that? Name one thing that really has really, you really enjoy about that. At the end of your four years or eight years, whatever it happens to be, what do you want your legacy to be? I like my name on a building that I helped build. That's what I like. But what legacy do you want to leave? I got this thing accomplished. I helped get the city here. What is it you want to leave after your eight years? And then, uh-oh, gotta share one fun fact that we might not know about you. Ready, set, go. Go. You two.
It was like, I'm not doing this.
No, I mean, I'll give you a few minutes to think about it if you want. I don't, yeah, yeah, give you a few minutes. Yeah, yeah, it's a lot of questions here. So, let me give you about our 10 minutes and then we'll fall through with that. Jill, I think you should do it too.
Wow, you pulled one out.
I know you can dig on your feet.
Everybody's sitting over there. I'm next to laugh. Have to be really careful about the fun fact. Some things you just have to keep.
Yeah, that's right. Don't want to share too much. Yeah. Shelley, are you done or are you thinking?
No, I'm just trying to figure out what is fun without me.
What's fun, one fun thing you've done, what's one unusual thing you've done? People would be surprised or shocked that you did that thing, that you can say in public.
Yeah.
Uh-oh. Everybody's kicking something over that one.
Everybody gets one.
It's like you get one pass and then it's counted.
Who's been on the council the longest?
Tom.
Yeah. Tom, okay. That's right, that's the mayor. Has more experience. You guys, are you ready, the rest of you? All right, Shelley. No, I serve on the council.
I decided to serve on the council to, you know, just try to help my community. I had been, I'd been a lot of different things. Scout leader, PTA president on parks and rec, on neighborhood association. And to me, it just sort of seemed like a continuation of my service on the neighborhood association to kind of represent my community and try to help Seal Beach be, you know, continue to be a great place, so.
Okay. What's, what about your service on the council do you find most satisfying?
I think it's, I think it's helping people, you know, when people are just like, ah, you know, this is happening and I don't know what to do, I don't know who to call, you know, they have a problem. Generally, it's just, it's directing them to some staff member and then, you know, I appreciate when they appreciate and, you know, they're happy because they got a resolution to their problem. So, I think that's probably the most satisfying. That's good.
What's your legacy to the community as a council member?
You know, I mean, I've done stuff. I, you know, I helped get a small section of the dog park through staff's help, do a pilot and get that done. I got the mediums done and when they wouldn't let us water the turf anymore, I got some park fixed up and stuff. But I think the legacy is just that I tried to be approachable to the community. I tried to, I gave a monthly newsletter each month to try to keep them informed what's going on and direct them to a website or some fact or something to alert them what's going on. So, I think that's, I think what I've been most proud of is trying to keep people in that community apprised of what's going on, so.
All right, give us that fun fact. Come on, you have to have something fun about you. Everyone has something.
Fun, I, in college, I took some courses, physical sciences, maybe geology, and I don't know what else it was, but they involved field trips. So, it was, you know, up to, you go from Lake Monongate, all the way up in California in one, and then over to the Grand Canyon in another, sleeping out in the desert in a sleeping bag. You know, for now, that seemed like, you know, kind of wild and fun. I can't, I'm not, I'm not too much fun.
All right, well, good. All right. Mr. Moore. We'll go to you next, you're the second senior. What? Why serve on the council?
Similarly to Shelley, to represent my residents well, improve communication between our district and the city, help others, improve, improve things. So, that's basically.
Okay. What do you like most about being on the council?
I like getting to know people better. I like, working with city staff has been a tremendous experience. Getting to know all my residents and my district as well, been really interesting for me to see all of the issues that they have and try to represent them well. So, I think the most satisfying thing is helping residents and getting to know people.
Excellent. What would you like your legacy to be?
Just to leave my district and the city better off than when I first started.
Okay, excellent. All right, tell us a fun.
Yeah, yeah, one fun thing, I used to be a valet parker in college. Worked in Hollywood Hills, so get to meet a lot of famous people. Carrie Fisher and Mary Marshall have a birthday party at the valet park every year, so the valet park's for their birthday party.
That is very cool. That is very cool. All right, very cool, all right.
I don't think anybody knew that, so. See? Brings more credibility to the parking ad hoc.
Yeah. That's right. Could be a new service you offer, right? Lisa, let's go to you next. So, why serve on the city council?
I had to think about this one. So, like Shelley, I volunteer a lot and I had a lot of people come to me and ask me to run for city council. I had a great campaign, but I did it because I love this community, I love Seal Beach, you know. I've only been here 13 years, which is new in Seal Beach, but, you know, I love the community and I, I just love that.
What do you like most about serving on the council?
I love that the residents now, I get so many people calling me from all over, all over Seal Beach, you know, asking for help and they look to me and I guess they feel like I can make a difference. And, I mean, I get calls from people on Belmont Shores thinking I can make a difference.
Wrong town.
So, I, you know, I like that part, is helping people.
Good. What would you like your legacy to be?
Like Tom said, making the community better when I leave, but of all the things, I'm going to get BMX and ski. So, they can take their e-bikes and be.
And be there, all right. Tell us a fun fact.
A lot of people don't know that I have more than one child, so Cody is not my only child, so I have two other children and I'm also a grandmother of two boys.
Oh, well, that's not good, a little grandma. All right, excellent. I guess, Joe, you're next. Why serve on the council?
Well, for me, it was kind of a natural progression, as I had a business on Main Street for almost over 40 years. And I was also a volunteer reserve firefighter in the community for 30 years. And so, I had so much interaction with the community and I knew folks from virtually every district and of course, Old Town. And when I retired from both, you know, I had a lot of folks say, well, you should be on the council because you know a lot about the community and things that go on, and so I did. Here I am.
Here you are. Excellent. What do you like being on? What do you like being on? The other question I could have asked is, was being a council member everything you thought it would be, but we won't ask that question this time, because that would be a whole different discussion.
Yes.
What do you like most about being a council member?
Well, I enjoy seeing things accomplished, you know, to be able to see and work together with the other council members to where, you know, we've had a balanced budget up to this point, and that's a big accomplishment in today's complicated financial world that we're in. And the fact that, you know, when constituents call and have a particular problem and I can direct them, you know, to the right person, or I can do something that would take care of it for them. And some of the things that I instituted, like our dog park, it's odor, you know, you see the benefits and the punishment that comes from having those things done.
Excellent. What would you like your legacy to be?
Well, to know that people recognize that I cared very much about the community and worked very hard to make it a city that, you know, that I want to live in and have the respect of people that felt that I did a good job.
What's your fun fact?
For four years out of college, I worked on a NASA program where we orbited a monkey in space. And I learned several things, including how to do anesthesiology on the monkeys. And so, if anybody's in need. I never lost hope.
Craig's moving around his seat.
It was quite exciting, you know, we're going to see, actually, we worked at UCLA and then in Philadelphia where the spacecraft was built and at Cape Canaveral, where we launched. And while I was there, I was able to see Apollo 11 launched in real time.
Wow, great. All right, all right, Nathan, you're gonna have to give it up. All right, why be on the council?
Service, actually. I've been doing missionary work in Africa for the last, since 2011, and so I made like 26 trips now to Cameroon, Africa. And I was looking for some way to serve closer to home, so I don't have to keep.
Cameroon.
I'm still going to Cameroon, but it's, you know. So, I was really inspired to do some good closer to home. That was the entire motivation for me.
Okay. What do you like most about being on the council?
Even though I'm the newest person on the panel to Seal Beach, I'm like a Mr. Newbie. I've only been in this situation, so I bought in 2018, lived here since 2019. I've only been in this situation, so I bought in twenty eighteen, lived here since twenty nineteen. Eh, what do I enjoy? I think dealing with issues is, to me, it's, it's, it sounds odd, but it's fun, you know, actually getting into, eh, what the issues are, what impacts those issues, what ramifications of decisions are, eh, that kind of nerdy stuff, I really, eh, enjoy the process of getting to know the issue from the inside out, and so that's, that's, eh, been a very satisfying for me, for me.
What, what do you want your legacy to be?
I don't think in terms of legacy.
Legacy, okay, that's okay.
I'm not looking for buildings or parks or anything like that, I don't want people complaining to me about a leaky faucet in the dog park. So there's no, there's per, per se no legacy, eh, other than the fact that he was there and, and he made the world a bit better, and, eh, like so, so that's.
It's a good goal.
That's a good legacy right there, some fun thing, I was a rock and roll disc jockey in commercial radio back in the days of.
What?
And, eh, started in, eh, Fayetteville, Arkansas, which was a quintessential college town in, you know, the hill country of Arkansas, and proceeded all the way up into the Chicago market, so that, I, I did that.
Amazing.
I, I quit that because my then-wife thought I was wasting my time, so I became a stockbroker.
Wow, okay.
What a transition.
Yeah, transition, quite a transition, yeah.
So vintage rock seventies, eighties, I got Chicago.
Excellent, all right, you can be at the next Seal Beach party, spin of the records.
I want to hear that radio voice once in a while.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah.
Should be close to a mic.
Eh, we're gonna do Jill, and then I'm gonna throw a curveball at you all, I want you all to think of one fun fact for yourself, just one fun fact, we're not gonna go through all it.
We're being audio recorded, just as we're.
Yeah, so, yeah, nothing about college, eh, Jill?
Yes, ma'am.
Why did you decide to become a city manager in lovely Seal Beach?
Well, quite honestly, eh, when I came to Seal Beach, I had never intended or expected to be a city manager, and there was a need when a, a city manager stepped down in a council that had, eh, faith and confidence in me to continue, to keep the stability of the organization moving forward, and quite honestly, it's the best decision that I ever made. Eh, it, it really and truly is, and it all goes back to when I, I started my career working for a school district and recognized that regardless of the work that we're doing, at what level, we're all making life better for someone each and every day, when, in that particular case, whether it's students, teachers, parents, or for a city, whether it's council members, our staff team, our organization, the community, we have the ability and the honor and privilege to make a difference every single day, and I'll, I'll never forget that, I can't imagine a career or a life without public service, so for, for me, that's what drives me and that's where my passion is.
Eh, what do you find most satisfying about your service as a city manager?
Eh, it's kind of, there, there's a lot, but I can kind of summarize it by saying that no day is ever the same, and, eh, having the support of the council gives me the, eh, gives me the ability, eh, every day to make a difference, eh, this may sound a little unique, but actually, eh, you know, the challenge of, of working alongside, you know, five council members, all with their own, eh, unique personalities and interests and, eh, ideas and what they want to see get done, and being able to manage all of that, working alongside, quite frankly, eh, the best, the best damn, eh, professional staff team I've ever had the honor and privilege to work alongside. Eh, and then third would be balancing all of that with providing service and the work that we do on behalf of the residents and businesses in this community, and then being able to pull all of that together in the best interest, eh, of this town. Eh, in terms of the legacy that I would like to leave this community is to be able to continue to, to keep this organization stable, eh, supported by, as I mentioned, the best professional staff team that I can, can even imagine, and the best team I've ever had the privilege to work alongside and to be able to continue, eh, to retain the talent that we have here, eh, and to do the work on behalf of, of this community, that's the legacy I hope to leave, it's more on a personal level, eh, not, eh, doesn't even come close to talking about buildings or building things or CIPs or any of that, it's the people that are our strongest asset that are here and care about this community, so that's the legacy that I hope to leave is the people and the teams, eh, and our passion for the work that we do.
And your fun fact?
Eh, some people may know this, so we, we have a lot of twins in this organization, whether we have employees that are twins, we have parents who have twins, eh, I'm an identical twin sister, eh, I'm eight minutes older than my twin, eh, and I'll keep it clean just by saying that we have a strong ability to divide and conquer when necessary to do so. Eh, we've done it all our life and continue to do it, and we, we thoroughly enjoy every minute of it, so.
Thank you.
I'll leave you with that.
All right, I'm gonna start with our fun fact, please.
Fun fact, I, eh, like to teach weight boarding.
What? What?
You didn't say that on thirteen building.
That's because I would have a facility.
Okay.
We were the water girl, she's still saying.
Alexa?
Eh, I love to sing, I sang in a cover band in college and, eh, George Waters on all of yours.
Nice, Iris?
I wish I had a talent to offer, but, eh, I'm really good at collecting shoes that I have over a hundred pairs of shoes.
You know, the dog park.
Yes. The only person that has better shoes than me is Iris, because Iris and I used to work together, and she would come to these families, she was like, my God, where'd you get those? Eh, so, so that is a true statement, Joe?
Well, before the city decided to make a great decision to hire me on full-time, I had many, eh, many interesting jobs, but I think the most fun one was I was the strength coach for the US water polo team for three Olympics, and so that was, eh, a really great time in my life before I got hired full-time.
Wow, awesome, Craig?
Seems to be a trend, a former job, hopefully, hopefully not looking at me as Forrest Gump and not my boat, but eighteen years old, I was a fishing boat captain, and I started working on boats when I was thirteen, and eighteen-hour days as a thirteen-year-old in a different labor market back then, eh, but, eh, ran a boat at eighteen to Mexico, and that's my passion.
Awesome, Mike?
Eh, when I was a teenager, eh, my stepdad worked for a company called National Cash Register and sold business machines, and we moved to Saudi Arabia for three years, and I lived in Saudi Arabia as a teenager.
Wow.
Yeah.
Amazing. We're all learning about this, that's, that's the point of this, right? Patrick?
Eh, well, eh, some of you may know this, but, eh, after leaving the corporate world, eh, I wanted to get back into public service and, and I worked in the five boroughs of New York, particularly in Manhattan, eh, organizing labor, eh, with one of the largest food and commercial workers' unions, and my last stint was in the former Works for Trade Center, eh, and, eh, it was really gratifying, so when I got back to California, I wanted to really to get invested in the community, and I found the right one in Seal Beach, so, my story.
You're two of them.
I, I know.
Eh, I used to play the trombone in high school, I was in.
Awesome, awesome.
You played trombones?
No, not trombone, I played the clarinet in high school, now I was in high school.
Okay, all right.
So we got two musicians.
You got a lot of musicians, you got a band, you got a band here, yeah.
You got an announcer, you got an announcer, yeah.
He, he used to play our music, eh, in Arkansas.
So the point of this is, you know, we all have, we all have lives and outside of work and, and we have more things in common than we, than we know, and so that's a good basis for working together as a team. Now, let's talk about governing, governing is a little bit different than being on a team. How, how do we govern, how do you as a council govern, what is, what is your role in this, in this big team, and it's an important role? The five of you make decisions that can have lasting, lasting impacts on your community for the good or the bad, right? Sometimes there's unintended consequences to our decisions, when you decide to put a development on a piece of property, that development never goes away, it changes how things look, it can, it can be for the better or the worse, so land use, obviously, you know, you all spend a lot of time on that, that's a very important issue, eh. You have to work as a team, I want you all, the five of you, particularly, to imagine in your professional careers, that you had five bosses that had, that were telling you five different things every day to do, how can you possibly do them all? Right, and part of today's workshop is really thinking about the five of you as a team providing singular, more focused direction to Jill and thirteen. Things are gonna come up, community members are gonna want help, I'm not saying that, that, that stuff needs to go away, but when we're talking about the big issues and the things that really are matter, the things that could really be impactful to this community, you really need to think about what you want as a team, as the five of you. How do we have honest, direct communication, one of the, one of the themes we heard is we want more communication. You know, we can say that all day long, but communication is two ways. I'm, I'm talking at you right now and you're listening, do I actually know what you think I'm saying is? No, you may, I may think I'm saying, I may think I'm being funny and you guys will, she's not, she's not being funny, right, so you, we have to make sure that we are understanding what somebody is saying and that they are understanding us, and, and there's lots of ways we can do that. Understanding roles, you don't want Jill making decisions that you should be making, and you don't, you should not be making decisions that Jill needs to be making. If you implement a policy, you have to trust that Jill and this team are gonna implement that policy. There may be four or five ways to get there, but Jill and this team have the experience to implement that policy based on how it is written and, and how you all have decided you want to implement. Mutual respect, building trust, if I don't know you, I don't trust you. Some people never, never trust, right? And if some of you are on different sides of the decision, all of a sudden, well, I don't trust you and I don't like you, let's step back from that, eh, that's, that's, those aren't, they're not personal decisions. They are, they're not against one of you, right, if Shelley votes against something Nathan wants, that doesn't mean Shelley hates Nathan, right?
It, it means.
Right, it means Shelley has a different opinion than Nathan, and that's all it means, because we're assuming good intent, we're assuming Shelley thinks that Nathan's idea maybe on this, on this issue is not that great, and she's got her reasons, and hopefully she's explaining those reasons to Nathan, so at least while he is disappointed that she's not agreeing, he understands her rationale, and you guys can move forward, it's kind of like, I, I think I might have said this last year, you all marry each other for the next four or eight years, wherever you're on this council, and if you want to be in a really ugly marriage, right, don't get along, but sometimes in a marriage, if you want it to last a long time, you need to just swallow it and just move on and forget about it, and not bring up, well, you know, two, two years ago, you voted against something I liked and now I don't like you, you, you can't do that in this, in this relationship with the five of you. And I think in my conversations with all of you, I don't think ethics is a problem here, but, you know, everything needs to be above board, nothing, nothing behind closed doors, no backroom dealing, no cut and deals behind the scenes, you know, that's not how this works, it needs to be public, the public is important. So, let's talk a little bit about this, we've talked a lot about teamwork. Let me ask you, do you as a council member, I ask each one of you, do you think you understand your roles and responsibilities as a council member, Joe?
Yes, I think so.
Yes.
Okay. Maybe not everyone thinks that way, sometimes maybe you're stepping in, stepping into these focuses realm a little bit, so, again, as, as issues come up, you need to talk to your department heads because they're experts, right, if something, if some land use thing comes up about housing, y- you gotta talk, you gotta talk to your community development director, because she knows everything about all of that, you're getting background information and you're, and you're understanding the issue, and that's, that's key. But if, but if at some point you say, well, Alexa, I think you should do this, then you've crossed the line. Alexa will provide you all the information you need to make a good decision, that's her job, but when you, when you ask her to do something that is in the policy realm, that has to be done by the five of you. Make sense? Yes. All right. Unity of purpose, when the five of you talked about why you're a council member, you all said these two words, residence and I want to make Seal Beach better. That's your unity of purpose in this community, you care about your residents, you care about this community, and, and if every decision you make, you put that in the top of your mind, you'll always make good decisions. Positive governance and structure, how we treat each other, right? If you look at the news, people don't treat each other so well anymore, if you treat each other with respect and kindness, you'll get respect and kindness, if you start calling people names and yelling at them or telling them they're an idiot, that doesn't go too well for people. We can get our point across that we disagree without being nasty, I think it's a lost art in some communities. You guys seem to get along relatively well, but I, I have seen things that would make you hair curl. And so it's your job to be respectful to each other, because if you're respectful to each other, that sets the tone and the example for the community, and when the community is, eh, and Mayor, this is mostly your job, right, when the community gets out of line, they start saying things they shouldn't be saying, they become very negative, they have a right to speak, they have a right to speak respectfully, and you have a right to shut them down. And when you set the tone as the council of how we behave in a council meeting, your council meetings will go much better, even if people are upset. You know, you want them to be, you want people to say what they have to say, but they don't need to be calling people names and all that other stuff that they do. And you guys have set some, eh, some norms and some civility principles that we want to talk about in a minute, too. Make sense? Give yourself a grade as a council for teamwork, I almost want you to write on a piece of paper and say, don't say it out loud, but, I want to start with this, Mayor? As a team, eh, what's your grade for US teamwork, how well do you get along, A, A to F?
This is, this is not the one council meeting I've had, this is like our last year.
Yeah, yeah, last year, last year.
I, I think we get a, like a B.
Okay, all right.
Most, most of the time, I think we're.
Pretty good?
We're pretty good, yeah.
All right.
I would say a C.
Okay.
A B.
B?
B.
Okay, all right, part of this is being honest, too, right, is, like, if it's an F, it's like, oh, you guys suck, this, you should know that, right, and then we can, we can kind of figure out how to, how to get from there. Okay. You would, these are your civility principles, you, eh, you adopted these, every time I get an email from your staff, it's on their signature block, so these are really important to you. Let me ask a question, why did you adopt them, why did you feel the need to adopt civility principles? Lisa? Go.
Because society in general is out of control, and there is no civility in general, and we see that in the day, eh, the news, we see it in our private lives with friends and relatives and, eh, other community groups, and so this, in my opinion, the city council has to be. And so this, in my opinion, the city council has to be the one place where civility rules.
Anybody else have any thoughts about that?
I, I think it's helpful for our residents when they're doing the public comments to know that we're trying to be, follow these civility principles. Because we, if they're reminded of them, then their comments are a little more polite.
But, that's great. Some, sometimes. Nathan, do you have any thoughts?
Not really.
Okay, that's okay. You don't have to. Mayor?
I don't think Tom did it.
You guys are setting the standard for how you behave in the council and how you behave with each other. And that's, and that's important. Give your, give yourself a grade on these. When, when you're, when you're in a council meeting, are you adhering to these as a group? Just give yourself a grade. Tom, go in.
From A to?
A to F.
In fact, we all have our human, so sometimes we don't, but I, I would say a B.
Okay. Joe? B?
C.
C? It's a hard grader.
I think a B.
I think C.
Okay, good. All right. Is there anything about these that you think could be changed or should be changed? I, yes or no? And then if it's a yes, I'm gonna put it on the bike rack. If it's a no, we'll just leave them alone. No changes? No? Like them? Good. You also adopted some norms. Again, uh, how we behave with each other and with the community. Again, these were very important to you as a group. Do you like these? Do you adhere to these? What do you think? These aren't just good, these aren't just good councilmen. No, these are good human beings. And you're, you're a human being in society. There's, there's nothing wrong with these. See, this is how everyone should be behaving. If we're all behaving this way, life would be a lot easier for most, for a lot of us, right? And I think that's, that's kind of the point here is that it's, it's kind of sad, kind of Joe, what you said. It's kind of sad that you even have to say this, right? But we, but we do. And so this is how we're going to behave. This is how we're expecting the staff to behave, not only to the council, the council, or the staff, the staff to each other, you to each other, right? That's how we should behave in, in general. So these are good and we want to continue to not only implement them, but we also want to figure out a way how, when somebody is really violating this, somebody breaks a confidential, how do we, how do you hold each other accountable? Because it's not Jill's job to hold you all accountable to each other. You need to hold each other accountable to each other. Jill, Jill, Jill works for you, not the other way around, right? So if, if one of you goes off the rails and spills a bunch of confidential information that's come from a closed session, your attorney's probably going to have to have some, some say about that. But it, but it also is who's all of you to call that person out and say, this is unacceptable and here's why. And those conversations are going to come from your attorney as well. So they're just good to have. I think they're great. If we could get all councils to behave like this, life would be a lot easier.
Carol, do you have a suggestion? I know those norms were a result of discussion that we had last year and they were brought before council and unanimously adopted. How we can be mindful of those on a regular basis versus just, hey, we came up with these norms, the council adopted them and then they're there, but how do we remind ourselves?
Are they on your agenda? Are they, maybe you put them on your agenda as, you know, part of the, part of the notice to the public, right? And the civility rules, right? We welcome all residents to the, to the, to the council meeting. These are, these are the rules by which we all play in. Here's our civility rules. Here's our council norms. You know, put it on your website. You know, do a press release about it. Put it on Facebook. We're, you guys are super proactive about this as a community and that's important. And this is a model other communities should be following. But it's only good as a piece of paper, it's written on if you're not implementing it. Yes, Pam?
So when you're talking about confidential, is that Brown Act violation also?
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Is that helpful, Joe?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. All right. Talk a lot about governance. Just one thing. Leadership is something else. Leadership can be done really by anybody in the organization. You've got a group of department heads sitting here, here, who, who lead their departments, who make sure that things get done. And they do that by cut, by kind of creating a shared vision. And that's part of what we're doing today is why are we here? What is our purpose? Our purpose here is to serve the residents, the city of Seal Beach, to the best of our abilities with the resources we have. That's what we're here to do. And provide them with all of those amenities that they, that they like. And you've got this fabulous beach and you've got great police and fire services and, and every other service. I don't want to leave anybody out, but every other service that's, that you provide is important to the community. And so that shared vision of these, of these department heads is providing that service based on the direction of the council. But you're the group that has to lead the department heads as well as the community. And you're getting input from the community and from Jill. And now you're trying to make a determination of what's in the best interest of the community. And so, um, but once you make that decision, you have to trust that the staff is going to implement that policy. And sometimes that's really hard. And you all have had, you know, great careers and have been in business and you know lots of things about lots of things. But you don't know as much as these folks about government. I'll just say that straight out. Because these guys have been in the business for years and years and years. And not only with Seal Beach, they've been in other organizations. So you understand how things work and, and what you can do and what you can't do in the state rules and the municipal code and how that all works and how they can get things done. So your job as leaders is to say, this is what we want done. Here's our vision for what we want done. Please go do it. And they will. Leadership is trust. They have to trust you and you have to trust them. And it's really key to success. If I'm just the leader, it's a lot easier for me to say, I want you to do X, Y, and Z and you go do it. There's five of you. With five very different opinions about how things should be done and what should be done. It's much more difficult to lead. And that's why being collaborative, being inclusive, listening to all ideas is key. One of the things that, one of the strategies I have used that I think is very successful is when we have a problem. Say I'm, we'll, we'll pretend I'm Jill for a second. I walk into a room and I think in my head, I am not the smartest person in the room. And I say, I may have an idea of how I think I want to solve a problem, but I get in a room with these folks and I say, okay, here's my problem. What do you think? And they will come up with a better solution nine times out of 10 than what I thought. Because you've got people in various expertise. And I may think it's, this is a community development problem, but no, it's not just a community development problem. It's a fire problem, it's a police problem. Oh, and it's a lifeguard problem. But I wasn't thinking that way because my focus is much more narrow. So it's easy. You can't always assume that you're the smartest person in the room. Because there are people in the room that have expertise that you don't have. That doesn't mean you're dumb or stupid. It just means it's, it's different, right? And, and so we want to make sure that we are using our experts and their expertise to the fullest extent. And we have to trust that they know and they understand. They understand government better than the council does. And they can implement whatever it is you're looking for. But you have to trust that they'll do that. Make sense? Questions? Comments? Okay. The, the other thing that I heard, and this, this has bothered me for 30 years and so it's not just you guys, is the staff brings a project to the council. City manager, it's been going on for three years, five years. And every, the project is just finally coming together. And you think you've gotten all, you're the staff and you think you've got all the questions answered and you've had those conversations with council and council's on board and council understands. And then you get to the council meeting. And let's say a hundred people, I've seen it in your council chambers, a hundred people show up. The council chamber is full. And every one of them is mad. And you all know as council people that what the staff has recommended is the right thing to do for the community. But you've got a hundred angry people screaming. And they've broken every civility rule that you have and they've broken every norm that you have. And they are angry. And you cave. And you don't do what's best for the community. And that, that has long-term implications. So if you want to be a leader, I want to share this with you. I found this. Jill is a college football fan, if you didn't know that. Um, because when I told her about this, she's, oh, I know what that is. Um, Kirby Smart is the football coach at the University of Georgia. And when I saw this, I really, it really stuck with me. I really thought it's really important to understand. Because when we say we want to be a leader, we want the glory, right? We want, we want those, we want those things to get done that we want to get done. We want to help the community. Okay? Here's the cost of being a leader, and I really think this is true. You will have to make hard decisions that negatively affect people you care about. And I guarantee you, I know you're going through a water and sewer rate increase right now. And those things are nasty, they're political. People are PO'd that, that you're going to raise their rates until their sewer line crashes in the middle of the street and it's going to cost you $3 million to fix it. But when you get to the council meeting and you want to raise the rates by $2 a month, people act like you're gonna, like you're gonna kill their firstborn. And, um, but it's the right thing to do for the community because you haven't raised rates in 20 years. I don't know that that's true, I'm just making that up. You will be disliked despite your best attempt to do the best for the most. This is not a popularity contest. If you want to be popular, you're in the wrong business. And you will be misunderstood and won't always have the opportunity to defend yourself. That's even more true for Jill and her staff than it is for you. And that's a really hard place to be. To have somebody say something that you know is completely false about you or your staff or somebody else in a public meeting and you know you cannot get into a debate with a member of the public. It's really hard to do. If you want to be leaders, you have to understand this and you have to be willing to accept that. A hundred people in a council meeting is not your community. It's a small, small, small portion of your community. What is in the best interest of the community, just use water and sewer again, is that your water lines don't fail, that your sewer lines don't fail. No, that's not a new dog park. That's not as fun as that, is it? But it's more important in a lot of ways. Because maintaining the infrastructure of your organization is key to how it looks and how it operates and whether people can get water and sewer. So I want you to, I want you to think about that when you're making decisions at a council. And the people who, the people who come to council meetings, who have never been to a council meeting, in my experience, are the people, they got the notice, the 300-foot notice that says you've got a project going on. And the reason they show up is because it impacts them the most. And it absolutely does, right? If I get a notice from the city that says, you're going to build a five-story apartment building next to my house, you, you're dang right, I'm going to show up at a council meeting. Which I never had in my own community, by the way, but. But, that being said, what does that five-story office building mean to the rest of the community? Oh, you've got the state breathing down your throat that says you have to put in all these, all these apartments in your community to accommodate all these people. And frankly, the only place that's, that, that can happen is next to me. So I'm going to come out, I would come out guns blazing as a member of the public. But I am not the public. And I don't have the deep understanding that you all have. You have a state requirement that does this and this is the only place that it put that. So you have to make a really unpopular decision for me and my neighbors. And that's okay. Because that's what leadership is and that's what you were elected to do. You were elected to make the best decisions for the community. To get the entire community to understand all of the details that you know is, is hard to do because it's a very complex situation. Thoughts about this? Lisa? No? Okay. Where are we talking? Okay. So now we've talked about governance and we've talked about leadership. Now it's your turn to play. Here's an example. A divisive community issue has arisen. The city has projected a million-dollar need for ongoing revenue to keep the level of services the community expects going. After much community debate, the council has two choices. There are no third choices. You have to pick one of the two.
This is a hypothetical.
This is a hypothetical. I just made this up. You have to cut a million dollars out, out of the budget which equates to the Parks and Recreation Department. Sorry, Parks and Rec? Or you allow a car dealership into the city on the north side of PCH. Those are your two choices. The council chamber is filled with angry residents who do not want the car dealership in their neighborhood. No one speaks in favor of the car dealership or identifies the loss of the Parks and Recreation Department as something they care about. I've been in meetings like this and they're not fun. So we're going to vote. Hypothetically, it's maybe, not for real. And we're going to start with Jill at this end of the ballot. So Jill, how would you vote? Number one or number two?
Number two.
Number two.
If that's, if those are in fact the only two choices, I always operate on the concept of what are the unintended consequences of any decision that I make personally or serving on the council? And if the unintended consequences of voting no are going to instantaneously make the filled council chamber happy that we fought off this horrible idea and within two years we're in budget deficit that at the time could cause some serious infrastructure problems or our ability to perform what we need to do, then that's when you have to make that kind of decision.
Keep track of it, keep track of it. All right. All right, Mr. Moore.
I would agree with Jill, because we can't cut the Parks and Rec.
Okay. These are too extreme, right? Because development is an issue. I know it is, right? So, but why, Lisa?
Two. One, we'd be generating revenue, and going the other way, we would be affecting quality of life for residents, in our case.
Okay. Alexa?
And a repeat question, I get to choose one, number one.
Number one? Or number two?
Parks and Rec and allow a car dealership into the city. I'd probably go with number two, because I don't like jobs, and car dealerships are good revenue for the city, too.
Yeah, Barb's counting sales tax dollars. Madam Mayor.
I like to, same as Jill, I like to consider the ramifications also. You know, I think it may be specific to what's, you have to consider what you're putting in. You want kind of disruption. A car dealership doesn't sound particularly disruptive, but I think you need to, you know, you need to give it...
Just drive, so.
Just drive.
BMWs racing down your street, yeah.
You know, if it's black and white like that, I would take two, awesome.
Okay. And it's easy to say that when you're sitting here without 100 angry people who have just screamed at you for the last two hours, right? But again, these are kind of some of the leadership decisions that you need to make that are very, very tough, very tough. And I just kind of wanted to share that as a thing to think through when you're making decisions. Is it just the people in the room that you're concerned about? And I would say it should not ever be just the people in the room. You need to think about the broader community and the impacts of your decision. All right, we just did that. Take a break? It's a little bit early, but it's okay. All right, Madam Mayor, you ready?
Yep, sorry.
All right. Thank you. So one of the things I want to talk about is, when we talk to all of you as council members and the staff, there's some reoccurring themes of kind of myths. Things that you may believe are true, but in fact aren't. And in fact, there's lots going on in places maybe you're not aware of. And as I sat down with Jill and the department heads, we kind of talked about that, and I thought, you know, it would be really good to kind of put it out on the table. There's this series of myths about Seal Beach, and about the staff, and about the operations of the community and the government, and all of that. And I wanted to take a moment and step back and say, okay, let's deal in facts and not perceptions. There's a great quote, I wish I knew who said it, but you know, "We're all entitled to our own opinions, but facts are facts." Right? And I think sometimes we spout out things that we think are true, but may not be true. And so I wanted to give Jill and her team an opportunity to kind of walk through this with you. You've heard me talk enough for a couple hours, and here are some other voices in the room. Jill, I'm going to hand this off to you.
Thank you very much. And council, I want to say thank you to all of you for initiating this conversation. I know a lot of this is conversation that our team has. And at the beginning, when Carol asked what my legacy was, hopefully you took away from that. For me, it's about the people and the strength of our organization, and being able to maintain the talent of the professionals that we have, and their staff teams to be able to continue to lead our organization forward. And quite frankly, the conversation that we're going to have here, these are the types of things that we find, you know, not only discouraging, but so disheartening, especially for all of us that choose to devote and dedicate ourselves in our passion to serving this community. So I want to thank you for initiating this conversation. We've spent quite a bit of time with our team here, going through these and talking about them, and what it means. And so I want to give Alexa an opportunity on behalf of our team to walk through this presentation, and would encourage, of course, our team to engage. And absolutely, the council, as we're going through this, to engage as well. I think that's where we're going to get the most value out of it. So again, want to thank our team for the effort and the dedication to be able to make this, hopefully, a really valuable opportunity today. So with that, Alexa, here's the clicker.
I'm going to stand already. She didn't tell you, you're going to have to listen to me. We all recognize this pair. We've all watched this show at different points in our lives. And I think, you know, the introduction sort of covered this slide. But want to talk just a little bit about things that we don't hear, things that we certainly hear, and offer some counterpoints and some counteropinions. And I will tell you that I'm going to start with some bigger slides, and then we'll get some smaller slides. Because I think how this actually breaks down is there are a couple really big myths, and then many other myths are actually tools to solve the first couple hard ones. So it kind of worked out sort of interestingly. I'm going to skip back, because we didn't really stick to it. This is the biggest one. Change is that. We were not always as we are. This is Seal Beach, it's a, you know, very different time periods. Fire, the depression destroyed the joy zone. At the time, the city was 15 years old. Sometimes I think about that, like, here's this new city, this town that incorporated, they're going to be decision-makers themselves. And all of a sudden, they're wrapped up in an identity of a roller coaster and a dance hall and all this kind of... And it's just gone almost overnight. What that must have felt like, and how challenging that must have been for the people that worked there, that depended on that, whether like, that had this identity of this is a revenue driver for this brand new community. It's really hard, and we kind of have those situations in our lives now. Development of the shops at Rossmore and Old Ranch Town Center. Those were very contentious things that happened years ago now. But those centers drive our revenues. We make millions of dollars off of sales tax from those centers. Some of these are funny, but it's amazing how much time they take. Tennis versus pickleball at the tennis center. You're stealing our courts. You know, those kinds of conversations, it takes time to get through it. But now, things are really fairly balanced out there. And the two communities have learned to live with each other and participate with each other. And now the tennis center operates in the block because of the revenue that pickleball brought in. So, you know, the first steps are tough. But it doesn't mean that it's the end. We can help shape what the outcomes of those are. When the court rulings forced us to adopt legislation last year that said, hey, guess what? We can't have short-term rentals now. I didn't know what was going to happen. You all didn't know what was going to happen. We had no idea going in, but, you know, we tried our hardest, and we cracked the ordinances, and we had some really good discussion between the planning commission and the five of you. We haven't had one call for a vote before, so, not one. In the, you know, year or so that we've come online. Maybe we got lucky. But maybe all those discussions and all the work that went in actually resulted in, you know, potentially a positive change. Because we weren't in control of that decision. The court said we had to do it. It wasn't up to us. We tried to do the best that we could. And that's what we can always do. Change isn't necessarily bad. It is happening. But it can be hard, and we acknowledge that, that it's difficult. And try to use the tools that are exposed to be the right. Small-town character makes us thrive. This is an interesting one. And it would be great to have a longer conversation on this at a later date. We don't have time for today, because we refer to this clause a lot. What is small-town character? That's on the wall in the council chamber. And we talked about it, and you talked about it, and residents that come to the podium will talk about it. But doesn't mean that nothing ever changes. That's not an option, we just went through that. Things change, things out of our control change. But we can prioritize our other things that make us special. Seal Beach's PD has an informal policy of no call too small. That's awesome. I have already told Jill I need six weeks off this summer to be a junior guard, because it just looks like such a...
Did I prove it?
Seven weeks, seven weeks.
It's like a rite of passage for a lot of the kids here. It's amazing. You know, having your recreation department show up to your community park once a year, and show a movie, and offer crafts, and some popcorn, that's really cool. A lot of communities don't do that. So, you know, maybe there are things here that are more who we are than just the term "small town". And how can we maintain the things that we love in the face of change? We have 25,000 people now, give or take. Can we still have that list of things that we love if we're a town of 27,000 people? It's a worthy discussion. We've hit on this a little bit already, and certainly this is kind of a sensitive topic right now. But when you all end your turns, and we, you know, we all share what we want our legacy to be, and none of you said, you know, those pipes that are in the ground that you can't see. I kept them there. Those roads you drive on all the time. We can still do that. We don't say those things, because it doesn't seem glamorous. But I think it's personal things in general with the running water, and that investing in those resources is very, very important to our quality of life, to health and safety. You know, it's been 100-plus years since we were, you know, pouring water ourselves out of wells, or dealing with our sanitation issues. We don't do any of that. We drive on roads, and we may say there's a lot of traffic, but those infrastructure pieces are very, very important to our quality of life. So it is glamorous to invest in things you can't see. And it is important to maintain things that may not feel like... It may not feel special.
We're running way over on the gas.
City is not transparent. That we're trying, really trying. Doesn't mean we can't do better, because you all brought up communication is so, so important. And your involvement in newsletters, and, you know, getting the word out, all of those things really critical piece to that. But we have, we've got a lot of social media accounts. We've got a city manager letter that now goes out, you know, be it you asked, or people can sign up for it. We do update our website in a variety of ways, and we want to do more. We would like to do more. All cities are learning this to be really important right now. And a lot of them have gone and hired a, you know, public communications officer, or whatever it may be. And we're piecing it together as we are. We're happy to try new things. We are trying new things. We've tried lots of other things this year. But I think saying that we're not transparent might not be the most effective way to end a conversation, I suppose. So here's places that you can engage with us, and give us some suggestions on where we can meet everyone halfway. That's what we want to talk about.
Alexa, if I could, I know Patrick might want to touch on this Ask City Hall. I know that was something that we implemented during COVID to try another avenue for employees, or residents and community members to reach out to the city directly, regardless of what they may be requesting from us, or even just questions that they might have.
It's like you're reading my mind. I was actually writing a note about the biggest change recently, obviously, is COVID. And one of the things I came out of that was Ask City Hall. As simple as it is, just an email, because you guys were getting questions from your residents, and it seemed to be like there was a disconnect, because everybody was scrambling. We have remote, and we were trying to find our new roles and responsibility in this new environment. And AskCityHall.com was essentially something where you could provide to the residents. And our goal was to reach them within 72 hours to respond to them. And to this day, it's still working out. Lauren Barrish over there, an analyst, manages it to this day. And we get, you know, requests from tourists, from businesses, a lot of residents. In particular, a lot of folks from the leisure world use it surprisingly, because they're looking for resources. So that's just one small thing that we did. It's very simple, but very impactful for residents.
Yeah, thank you. And then Gloria, in terms of public records, on average, what are we averaging on an annual basis? Because I know we have a link on our website now, where you don't need, you know, in the old days, when I was a city clerk, you know, you had to submit something in writing or come into City Hall to physically request public records. Now we have that, our next request portal online, to make it easier and more convenient for residents to request records.
Yes, you can actually go to the clerk's website, and you can make your request there. And that goes directly to Wendy and myself and Brandon now, in his interim position. And right now, we're right at, I mean, last year, we had right at 400 requests. And right now, I think we're at about 25. No, today is the 30th, we're ahead of the month. I can't think of how many we have, so we may have about 35 now.
So I think all of that to say with this slide is, and I think, you know, it's a common term that people use, well, the city's not being transparent. And the fact of the matter is, we're doing everything we possibly can to be as transparent as we possibly can. I know I've heard from some council members, you know, it's almost as if we need to make phone calls, 24,000, 25,000 phone calls a day to every resident to tell them what's going on. We're putting, you know, the resources out there. We need residents and businesses to help engage and take advantage of the information that we're providing so that, you know, they're engaged with us and participating, so.
Because, I mean, it is the tool, right, for dealing with change, and the things that are challenging and hard. So, yeah, thank you all for kicking in. There are a lot of ways. Measure BB helped immensely. And it would be awesome if we could talk only about our goals, and our values, and money is no object, but we all know that's not the case. But we also don't control the economy, and we don't control the weather, and we don't set the cost of gas. And all of these things that kind of get balled up in this giant picture that is public service, costs go up. Barb's going to talk in just a minute about our budget practices, and you all have been through that a few times. It didn't solve it. The very unfortunate circumstance is that unless there are wildly sweeping changes, probably at the state level, it's always going to be a struggle. We are always going to fight for our budget every year, and we are always going to have to make really challenging decisions about what we can provide and what we can't provide, and where we need to invest. Like I said, BB was really, really important, and it helped to keep us solvent. But this is, it's not a one-and-done. It's going to be always. It's for you, it's for the council after you, and for the council after that.
Barb?
I'm going to take it back, the slide, back to Measure BB, just if I may. Thank you, Alexa. First, I want to touch on a regular car dealership that's named Tesla. Seeing as her anger was absolutely correct, because I was modeling the scenarios. Fiscal impact in my head, in the space that it used. Changes, so it is good. And sometimes I would test the bill, it would be advantageous, um, like to the public, to the city. And back here on Measure BB, it did solve the issues in 2018, 16, I mean, six years ago. It did add the police officers that were in need of the city, and we did add to that. It did cover the fire expenditures. It did handle the increased contract obligations from failing wage mandates, rising inflation, and then rising costs. It did cover the over 30% in rising insurance costs. I do have a note on here, reopening of the Jack Hady Building as a police substation at the library headquarters. That continues... That continues today. I'm looking at our two pieces over here, that that was part of Measure BB and that was implemented. And it, and it did cover repairs and maintenance. So it did what it was seen as necessary to do. But those compacted issues continue to, continue on. I hear this and it, it, it's, the city's not broke. You talk about what we're facing ahead, and I'm going to go over some fiscal slides in, in here and in the, if we gather lunch. But despite all the bad news, revenues are increasing. We have healthy revenues. We have very, very healthy property tax. Still to this day, even in this economy with high interest rates, our median home prices for a single family home is still $1.5 million. We, we are healthy. We're in a healthy city. Expenditures are outpacing. That's part of, you know, the decision-making going into the future. We're planning ahead as we look at the five-year forecast and what's up ahead is that we're talking about that as we are talking about our home. When costs are increasing, my insurance cost is $2,000 a year. And how am I going to face that and my family, you know, and, uh, my son pays a part of it. But we continue to also track good businesses. We fed back in beyond. We knew it was shutting down. That was something we had to think about. But it was replaced with another awesome business, Creighton Daryl. And we have talked to our sales tax consultants and we think that revenue is going, is going to be quite the same. We're dedicating, you know, this team, like city manager Ingram mentioned and Carol is that. This team's talking all the time and investing and thinking about where we stand and how we can make it better and where our dedication is. And each year, staff presents and adopts a balanced budget. Every year, it's council policy to adopt a balanced budget. If staff, which I, I don't know if they would be able to sleep at night if we did this, brought back a budget and said we're unbalanced, we're off a million dollars and we need to go to the rec center. We have to bring it to council balance. It's, it's a policy. I'm just going to sit here and let you kind of take a look at this slide for a minute. It looks like they're black, but they're really dark blue. But those are comparison cities. It's the 12, um, six of the 12 comparison cities. And I did an analysis and it took a good amount of time. And I was going to do all 12. But the story was the same with each city. Every other comparison was well beyond what the city of Sil Beach has for salary and benefit comparisons to other cities. Our salaries and benefits, and I included our contracts. I included fire. I included our contract personnel and PD. I also included our CD. Now, did I do that with other cities? After you reviewed the article, I said after three or four hours, you know, I included what I could. But to be quite honest with you, having those contracts included, if we didn't include them, we're, we're closer to the 48, 50% range. But including them, we're at 63%. The heart of the city, I would say, is Jill, but it's really, our biggest asset is our employees. They're the ones that are out there unclogging the drains and making sure our roads are paved and continuing with the rec centers and providing these excellent services. And I always get, you know, especially with all of our teams, I get really good feedback on how they interact with the public and provide those services to our community. And that's who we're dedicated to and that's who we're here to serve. But it's important to know, when you look at this slide here and do a comparison to what other cities have for their salaries and benefits, we're falling behind. With that myth here too is, right now, we're looking at compaction issues with a part of our city. We have to pay by state a minimum wage that's not adopted by council right now. Our minimum posted wage is less than what state mandated. So we have to bring that back. But what that's going to do is cause compaction issues onto our full-time employees. And that's a hard discussion they have because sometimes the community says, well, we don't, we don't need to pay them that or they don't need that. But this is what that reality is, is that we're falling behind in our biggest asset, our, our employees. With that, I'm going to hand it over back to Alexa.
Staff isn't qualified is also something that, I'll be here. It feels a little disingenuous for me to stand here as a staff member and be like, no, we're not. We're great. But the truth is, we, you know, we, we do have, we have a lot of experts on staff. We have people that went to school for the job that they have and degrees. We have people that have kind of lived in their job for a while and know it backwards and forwards and with their eyes closed. And that's, as Barb mentioned, that's, that's just, it's, it's precious. And staff is a tool to deal with those first slides that we talked about, to managing change. And we utilize those skills and, and the staff resources to help you do that with, with your direction and with your support. So are we using those tools? Are we using those skill sets? And are we following council policy? Those are the metrics because things come up that we don't deal with every day and we have to figure it out. You know, the, the, the sinkhole in the parking lot, that doesn't happen every day. So you, you know, you, you need to sort it out. Certainly the same thing is true with, with any of our departments. Things come up. We take over animal control. Have you ever run an animal control agency before? Is it what you thought it was going to be?
It's everything and more.
Once a chief, always a chief.
We hire too many consultants. Consultants are great. They really are. It, it's manpower. It is technical expertise. And then when they're done, you just kick them to the curb. They're gone. Like, it's fantastic. We don't have to invest in training. Their analyst quits. Not our problem. That's their problem. It, you know, it, it can solve a lot, a lot of issues in a, in an efficient and rapid manner. Barb just showed you what some other cities are spending on manpower and how we're low. And, and that's why particularly in, in small cities, consultants are really important to operations. To bring them in, utilize what they can give us, and then move on when warranted. So it's, it's not about how many consultants we have or don't have. It's about how do we get work done efficiently and effectively within the budget parameters and the policy parameters that you provided to us. And finally, consultants mean that staff is not involved. Well, it's typically not that simple because we are, um, we're utilizing consultants for the most part as an extension of staff. So we are engaged with them. We are providing them information. We're giving them input. We receive back draft work products. Oftentimes, there's a long back and forth to try to get to the point where the product is as best as it can possibly be. There may be certain things that, you know, are, are handled completely by consultants that we don't have a whole lot of interaction with. But that is very, very few and far between. So plan check would probably be the best example that I can think of because we do consult for plan check. I don't leave building plans. I don't check for building and safety. That is handled by those experts and they provide that back to us. That's probably the one really good example I can give you of where, you know, staff isn't necessarily involved in the day-to-day of their work. But we're still managing that consultant. We still cooperate with that consultant to make sure that our community is getting served the way that they need to be served. But they are a really great tool. And all these efforts to be collaborative with them are useful. And they provide outcomes to our community that, that we need. So I'm going to leave you with just some quick summaries of, of the myths that we've been through. Change isn't bad. It is hard, but it's not bad and it is happening. And we have tools to leverage. We have qualified staff. We have increasing and expanded communication practices. We have great consultants that we work with over the years. We have very solid budgeting practices and we have good community values. And we have all of you that are making good decisions, as hard as it may be, at every single meeting and at every single turn. And it is exhausting just thinking about it on behalf of you, quite honestly. But it really is so important to these efforts to have you feel bolstered and empowered to make those tough decisions. And that's what we're all here to do for you.
Before we get to the next part of the day, I want to follow up a little bit on, on, on the myths. One of the things you as council members, hopefully this will have educated you, right? When, when a community member says, you know, nobody's communicating with me. Did you know about Ask City Hall? Did you know about our Instagram page? Do you know about, um, the city manager's newsletter? You can sign up for this. Do you not have email, you know? If there's some weird, somebody's not connected to the internet, you know, you can think about that in a different way. But most people are connected. So part of, part of your job as elected officials is to share information with the community. Oh, you know, our staff, you know, your staff, they're a bunch of idiots. Well, they're really not. And here's why. Now, now they gave you an answer maybe you didn't like because that was the correct answer. But that doesn't mean they're not qualified to do their job. And I think one of the things that I have learned over the years, and it's, it's very, it happens to council people and it happens to all council people. I'm a resident. I come to you and I say, this, actually, I want to give you a free story because I think it's really important. I had a resident call me screaming at me. Your code enforcement officer, um, you know, yelled at my daughter and I want him fired. Whoa, that's, that's pretty, that's pretty harsh. Now, I guarantee you, nine times out of 10, if that message had gone to a council member first, that council member would be on the phone screaming at me to fire that person. In my old age, I've learned a kunk. Take it back a notch, take a breath and learn the facts before I make a decision. So I said, you know, sir, I am, I am really sorry. I apologize. You know, let me talk to the code enforcement officer and understand what, you know, all the ramifications, understand what happened. He said, okay. He said, I'll call you back. Called the code enforcement officer into my office. Never a pleasant thing for him to do. And I said, tell me about what happened at the centers. He said, yeah, oh my God. So, um, this guy has been a constant code enforcement problem. So he was doing a follow-up visit and, um, there was a bus outside of this home. And there was an autistic child on the bus. The autistic child was in a panic and was getting very anxious. And, um, some, there was supposed to be somebody in the home to pick up the kid. Somebody had to come out from the home and pick up the kid. Well, the daughter was supposed to be there and answer and pick up the kid. They'd been around the block twice with this kid. The kid was getting really agitated. The code enforcement officer went on the, went to the house, pounded on the door and said, you need to go get your brother because he's on, he's on the bus. That's what he said. So, okay, that's your side of the story. I've heard the resident's side of the story. So I said, code enforcement officer, let's get the resident on the phone together. Resident. Dear Mr. Resident, yes, this is code enforcement officer. I'm city manager. What's going on? So this is, I wanted, I wanted you to hear from my code enforcement officer what, what happened. Your daughter was not where she was supposed to be to pick up her brother, which caused her brother all kinds of angst. Explains the story. The resident says, okay, thank you. Bye. And it ended. So when a resident says a staff person did something to you, please, you know, have empathy with the resident. I'm sorry that happened to you. Let me find out what happened. Have the conversation and then see if it really is something that needs to be addressed or not. But that happens a lot. And just because a resident says something to you does not make it true. And just because a resident says a staff member said something to you, it's not, staff member said something to a resident, doesn't make it true. You have to hear both sides of the story. Again, leader, that's leadership. That's understanding and trusting your team that your team probably not going to do something that's fireable. But you are ambassadors of this community. You understand how this community works. You understand the, the quality staff that you have. You need to help educate the community on that. That's, that is part of your job, you know? The budget, the budget, you know, oh my God, the budget is terrible. It's got some challenges. It's got some serious challenges. But every year, that, the, the net revenue is zero, right? It is completely balanced. Um, and so I think it's important to lay the fears of the community because you have the inside information. And if you don't have the inside information, say, well, you know what? Let me give you the finance director's number and she can talk to you about it. She can explain it to you. So I, I think, you know, part of the myths sometimes get perpetuated by ourselves, right? If we have staffing, if we've had a bad day, whatever. The communication thing though, I really think the city is really trying very, very hard to put out as many avenues as possible. But it's also a resident's responsibility to figure out how to get in contact with city hall. You know, they're not going to just serve it on a silver platter in the way that you would like. We've got 15 ways to communicate with you. If you don't choose to get online, that's, that's on you. That's on, it's on the resident. That's not on you guys. So again, it was a nice lecture for you. I apologize. But I feel like I really have to, have to say that, you know, there's a lot of responsibility that comes with being a council member. And, and, and part of that is understanding the inside baseball of it and sharing that information with the community. That this is a well-run organization, that it is fiscally healthy, that you have amazing talented staff people that, that get the work done. And I guarantee you, if these people all leave, who's going to do the work? Employees do the work that gets done. And when we talk about, you know, the percentage of, of folks that you have compared to other agencies, it's a tough spot to be in. You keep asking more and more and more of employees and they can only do so much. There's only, there's only eight hours in a day, but really there's only 24 and you still can't get it all done. So, um, sometimes a little grace, a little understanding is helpful to balance out the relationship and make sure that you have an appreciation for everything that's on their plate. All right, with that, um, Steve, you know, said nothing all day. Would you like to take this on with you? Or would you like me? All right.
You're doing fabulous. I approve.
So, um, one of the things that we heard from you, which was really important, and because we're changing it up a little bit, we wanted to talk about all the great things that had happened since, since we were here last year with you. It's a lot of things for a little staff. New phone system. We settled the parklet issue. You have more transparency in public input. Residents can be heard before approving consent calendar items. Opening of new businesses, the back from COVID kind of thing that happened to everybody. You've got some, um, some new projects, the West End Pump Station. Trying to, trying to educate everybody on the financial challenges that, that lie ahead and how, how best to manage that. And they're all manageable, they're all manageable problems. You know, collaboration. There, there's a cohesiveness with the council on many, many issues. And you're all working as a team, which is, which is absolutely great. You have a great relationship with the chamber and you all have good working relationship with the city manager. I don't know if you guys, all, any of you pay attention to how city managers run through cities. But you're very lucky to have Jill because in most cities, city managers, these days are lasting two or three years. And that overturn, and that overturn is so disruptive to a community and so disruptive to a staff. And to have the consistency of Jill and her team is, is key to your success. All right. This is what, this is what I heard from you. These are the challenges. Finances. Finances are always going to be a challenge in a little city. Because there's never enough, there's never enough money to do all the things that you want to do. New state laws, state of California, we've probably talked, we talked about this last year. State of California is just coming down with these unfunded mandates that seem almost impossible to do. And the state doesn't really care. All right, just do it. We don't care how it destroys your All right, just do it. We don't care how it destroys your community. We don't care that it's difficult to do. We don't care that it takes millions of dollars to implement. We don't care about any of that. We just want you to do it at the expense of everything else. That's a huge challenge. It's a huge challenge. But you're going to have to manage that. The restaurant on the pier, that, again, those, these are kind of the decision points we're going to be talking about a little bit later. You want a restaurant on the pier? Do you not want a restaurant on the pier? What do you want? And no decision is a decision. You've got to remember that. And kicking the can down the road is a decision. And that's not leadership, and that's not good governance on any issue. Flooding issues. You've got flooding issues. You know, rains are going to come here next week. It's an ongoing problem. Need new revenue sources. We're going to talk about that. We've talked about VB and how that solved a lot, but not everything. Unfunded mandates and state laws are kind of the same. And we wanted to talk a little bit about the jail facility and animal control. Any other things out there that we didn't mention? Joe? We're going to talk about the community pool and our priorities, but that is absolutely on our list of things to talk about.
IT.
IT? That's on our list to talk about as well. Anything else that?
Thank you.
Anything else that we talked about as a group that I didn't highlight?
I'm happy to hear about financial analysis. We're going to talk about that. I, there's been a lot of talk about our budget and what we're going forth with. I brought this up, but I think we talked about it just at the very end of the last budget cycle. I would, every year it comes up, but it's like, we'll talk about during budget, and then it's like the second meeting of budget just at the end. I think it's something that we should all be, I would like to understand it, not just say, there's a number. This time, you know, it's just this big, huge number. A year before that, you know, it's like, okay, we cut the budget by 4 million and we're good. Well, what, you know, was that once? What was it? So I would like to understand it more. At one time, we had a little bit more information on our city website. I know now we have the budgets and we have the, we don't call them, the name of the, the name of the financial analysis has changed.
Act for.
Act for.
Yeah. Different than what it used to be. But some cities have, you know, graphs and this and that. I would just like to have, if someone in the community wants to see, have it be a little easier for there to get the information. And I like to understand it when I'm making decisions, not just say, oh, we have a big number, so we have to do this. So, I mean, I like, I know they're busy with all the department stuff right now, but I like to have information, you know, whether it's a state of the city, not like, not like we used to have where we invite people from other communities to come and we tell them how great our city is. But there's some I've been to where they actually have residents come to a community center. I went to La Palmas before COVID, and they just had, let's see, Marshall Goodwin was mayor. They just had an evening where people could come in and hear about the budget. We did town halls like this before Measure VB and, you know, those who want to find out about numbers. And they can serve a cookie or an ice cream cone or something. Make it very, you know, I don't want to spend a lot of money when we're in a time where we might be needing money. So, but information, Los Alamos has had some state of the, or the Good Morning Los Alamos. It doesn't have to be a morning thing, but something where communication can happen too. I mean, I know we're trying to put it out. And as far as, you know, my newsletter, I just say, well, that's another opportunity to spread information. So, I'm, you know, I'm in favor of spreading information and also me understanding what things are so that I can try to do my job better too.
Rest of you feel that way?
I think at one point, we added a community budget meeting as part of the budget process. Maybe add that back.
Yeah. And then last year, we kind of, we start, we've asked to start earlier. Last year, we started earlier, but we also had to finish a little early too. We finished in May, I think. So, it just, we're not, we're not you guys, so it took us a little longer to look at it all and understand it all.
The other thing was the forecast was a lot different than I expected.
Yeah, there was a big change in the forecast, and I don't know that.
If you go back three years and look at the previous two forecasts and then go to last year's forecast, you know, it was much different.
And I don't know that we really understood why all that was happening.
It's a little unfair to council.
Yeah.
You know, have these forecasts, and then all of a sudden, one that's way out there.
Well, so we're going to, we'll put that on the bike rack because I think, you know, how you share financial information, how Barbara shares, and what stage before budget adoption is the conversation that I think we used to have, but we'll put it on the bike rack for now. Okay, I'm going to hand this over to Barbara.
We're going to talk a little bit about the financial outlook. Now that I'm here in the city, and I think improving the budget every year is vitally important and getting that feedback and providing our constituents and our council with the questions they have is vital. So, community outreach, community budget meetings, and as Carol said, she put it on the bike rack, and that's definitely something, and reporting, like definitely permit your reporting. I'm going to talk about the five-year forecast in just a moment, but I first want to talk about our revenues and expenditures in the general fund. And I think that all the way to, 2009, I actually went even farther back. As you can see, our revenues continue to grow. The revenues are healthy, but our expenditures also continue to grow and also continue to outpace revenues. So one of the issues is capital improvement projects are funded through fund balance, meaning our revenues come in and our expenditures are expended at the end of the year. There's a fund balance. When we program out the next year, we utilize those funds for CIPs. If those expenditures exceed revenues, there's not money set aside for long-term planning, and those capital projects get pushed down the road, and that's why you see this big jump, this kind of word, but that big jump over here because those are capital improvement projects that we can in there. Now, I want to point out that that amount does not include any water capital improvement projects because we're waiting on decisions here coming up in the future. But what I want to do point out is in 2018, we see that, that's when we implemented Measure VB, and 2020/20 is when you see that fully implemented in 2020. But there's also in 2020, we received, this includes those one-time revenues, which push up that blue bar a little bit. We received approximately 2.8 million for fire in 2021, 3 million for the pier in 2022, 5.7 million for insurance, and in 2023, 1.4 million for settlements. Now, if you exclude those one-time revenues, it really brings down that further. And so expenditures are right in line. Revenues are growing, but again, when you deal with this and you forecast it out and you're looking at expenditures, we need to make decisions and here in the near future on how we're going to continue to bring revenues into the city. Our population doesn't grow. With interest rates so high right now, we're not going to continue to see the increases that we've just seen, 7.7% in property tax last year, the growth. We're not going to continue to see that growth, and you won't see these revenues continue to rise. We need to stop and take a moment there. And so historically, we've been helping, and we do have a balanced budget. But when you look at this, the CIPs are what takes those expenditures on by a little higher. For the five-year, you've seen this. This was in the last budget cycle. And when I came here, what I noticed was that our historical information and a lot of times the way we do fiscal planning, and not that it's not, you know, there's many ways to skin a cap. Our budget, we actually went down to the project line item. So if we anticipated fire, a fire contract specifically to increase 5%, that's what we've seen in the previous slide. You did see that over the past five years, it's grown about 24%. And then insurance costs, we took all of those. We didn't do just, you know, contracts are included to 3%. We went to each line item and put what we actually felt was in there, and I think I showed a few slides last year, what those expenditure impacts are going forward. And we built that into the model going forward so that it, so we gave you a true depiction of what we're looking at. So when we start thinking about, sorry about that, about what we're seeing in the future, we want to have it as realistic and as snapshot in time as possible. A few points. Again, we have to have a balanced budget by June 30th. And each year, council, it's a. In sync, in a Lexicon sync. And here's a reasonable set of economic assumptions. Again, we anticipated, you know, fire costs to go up. We anticipated helpers to go up, so we've included that. The forecast is a snapshot in time. We're going to revisit this again, and we're going to again go back and see, you know, do we anticipate, you know, these contracts that we've discussed to continue to go up? Sometimes they go down. We like when it goes down, but not quite as, it doesn't happen quite as often. It's independent. Each year is independent of each other. We can't be in a 2027 budget and have it be that large negative amount with the next year's budget. Each year, you'll have, if the 22, 23, and the 2030, 24 budgets before you are balanced, and then we forecast out assumptions, and again, that's fiscally responsible. It's important to fiscally responsibly discuss today what we anticipate. We know we had a negative 21% return at helpers, we had a negative 6.8% return, and then we had a positive 5.8 when we anticipated 7%. We know that's going to fiscally impact the city in the long term, and it's going to go on for the next, you know, 30, 40 years. We want to take a look at the true impact of that cost, not a certain percentage. We want, we get it, we have a helpers tool that actually can help us forecast what our payments are going to be. I did show this to the executive team the other day when we had the budget kickoff. What we see those as when we present that to them and say, when you go back to your budgets, responsibly think, where are we going? What can we get rid of? What can we include? What can we combine? Are we duplicating our efforts? Those are all important aspects as we look at this financial forecast and while this team develops it with the staff within the city. This forecast, it serves as a planning tool. Again, it's a time for us, as you mentioned, Councilmember Moore, you want to see more. Mayor, you want to see more. It's a time for us to discuss what's coming up. But we need to look at it as a whole pie. You know, we also have salaries and benefits. That's a priority as well as capital projects. And then also insurance costs. Combining those all together, and this is a rolled-up version of them. And it allows for planned programming, which is so, so important as you make these decisions today, to give us our marching orders and how we plan this budget. And I think Carol's going to talk about that later on in the presentation. The upcoming budget process, we're in full swing. Actually, this here, you council members and mayor are going to give us the directions of your priorities, and we're going to take those priorities back to our teams, and that's how we'll start developing our budget. December through February is when the salaries and benefits are implemented and those analysis is done. January to February, which we've already done with the executive team and their departments, we did a budget kickoff. March to April is balancing. The departments try and balance their budgets, and then in May, and then we work through the city manager. And then, again, we start having budget workshops in May and then budget adoption in June. That was my last slide. I'm going to hand it back over to Carol unless you have any questions.
So, I think you all have a very successful government. I think you think you have a very successful government. And how does that work? How does that happen? So, the.
Barbara's up.
Sorry. So, every day, right now, today, there's a whole lot of people out there somewhere doing a lot of work for the city. Typically, you don't think about those people and what they're doing, but they're out there working away every day. And so, when you come up with new projects and have things that we want to have new priorities, you've got to remember that everybody's already got a whole lot of stuff to do, and this is now additive. So, you sort of have to trust what's going on. You have to talk to the manager, understand what's going on, but you have to realize that there's a lot of people working every day that are doing the best they can already for the city. So, when you think about things for the future, you have to really focus what you want to do, what the next priority is. Hey, I did it right. I love this slide. So, if you think about the slide, it's supposed to represent an iceberg. And policy goals, priorities are what you all think about all the time is what your job is. But every day, all this other stuff down below there is what's already going on. And again, those people are doing the best they can, planning for the future, managing this issue, keeping an eye on what's going on at the state level, trying to figure out how that's going to come down and impact you, how to get ready for that for the next time, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of ongoing stuff that staff is constantly working on. It's not like they're just sitting there waiting for the next big thing to come along. So as we think about prioritizing, and we're going to go through an exercise this afternoon about trying to establish what new priorities are, think about the big rocks then. So, if you've got a bucket, you're going to put new priorities in your bucket. Put the big rocks in first because the big things are going to take a lot of time and effort and money, probably. And so get those in first before you start worrying about the smaller ones because if you put in the small ones first, then there's going to be at least one big rocket, rock that you couldn't fit in if you do it the other way around. So, how is management time spent? And this, this is, you know, the best situation. Managed day-to-day management of municipal services, 85%. And what that means, management of municipal services is everything. So, it's relations with council members. It's what's going on at the state level. It's what's going on at the federal level. It's what's going on with an individual staff HR issue. All that stuff is management of municipal services. Then you've got unforeseen challenges when things start flooding or the beach starts really eroding. Then new initiatives, strategic improvements, and training. All those things kind of come after and are less than the big day-to-day keeping it going. So, just summarizing what the council comments were regarding priorities for the coming year. Fiscal issues, fiscal issues, fiscal issues was a big one with everybody. There was folks that wanted to find the next big thing, whether that is a pool, a lifeguard station, whatever the deal is. People seem to want to find a success and the next big thing that was going to happen. And then there was a definite desire to promote forward thinking, which is what we all want to do, right? We all want to think about the future. We want to figure out how to get ahead of the next problem before it gets to be a problem. And I think that's. And I think that's, yeah. I can dance. Nathan can kind of pick the songs. You can kind of do the covers of them, and I'll, and I'll dance.
Let's, I bet you all would like to get out of here earlier rather than later. So why don't we, why don't we kind of continue on until lunch comes? And then we'll, we'll break whenever that, whenever that is. All right. So, that looks like a tasty sandwich, and I'm really hungry, but
It's not a sandwich.
It's not a sandwich. It's food I'll eat, so. We guys, we kind of did the priority setting thing last year, so I think most of you are familiar with it. But here's what I want to do right now, actually. I want to share this with you. So we listened to the council and the staff about projects that, I apologize, this is so small. But this is the list we came up with. This is not an exhaustive list. This doesn't mean you can't add to it. But this is our starting point for your priorities. And I'm going to share this with the rest of us. Here, one for you, and one for you. You know what? And I've, I've got this on a PowerPoint too, if I can't read it, so we can, we can kind of talk about it. So what, what we're going to, I have this on big, on big slides, so it's too small to read, because it's too small for me. We can go through them, and this would be, this would actually be a good time for us to kind of talk through with them. If you have questions about the projects, the staff is here to answer those questions. So we can walk through so that you understand what, what we mean by those projects. And then, and then we'll go back, we'll, we'll continue on. But I want you guys to understand everything that's on this list. You guys have a comfort level for what these projects mean. These are mostly capital, capital projects. They're not anything other than capital. There's some other things at the very bottom, but we'll talk about that. What, one issue we have is money. You've got $48 million of projects, and that's how much money you actually have. And if you, the way that you guys do, do it here is you've put money aside for these two specific projects over the years. When you have a, when you have a surplus at the end of the year, there's $1,000, you have made a decision, or prior councils have made a decision and said, hey, we want to put that money aside for the pool. Or we want to put that money aside for the pier restaurant. So over the years, you have accumulated five, almost $5.8 million in funds that are in your bank account that you can use for a CIP project. The decisions you're going to have to make today are, do you want that? This is discretionary. This is totally your call as to whether or not you keep this money set aside for those two projects. You can say, we hate those projects, we don't want to do those projects, we want to go do this, we want to go do that. You have, you have the right to do that. And that's part of what's going to happen today as we go through the project list and the, the cost of a lot of these things, right? So we want to talk about those next. So I want you to know that, keep in your head first, that 5.8 is what, is what you have if you choose to not do those projects. If you choose to keep those projects on the books, we're starting at zero. Okay? Any questions about the finance side of this? All right. So, if you choose that you, as a council, want these two projects to continue on, you want to continue to save money, well, it's fine. Anything after that really has no money put aside for.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
So what we, there's a couple of things here. What we tried to do is kind of break them up into kind of categories so you can see what the needs are. And we're going to talk about the first two at the top of this. One of the things that you've heard is we don't have enough revenue. Local government does not have a whole bunch of options in California as to how they can raise revenue. And right now, it's ballot measures, and typically, sales tax is what people do. I haven't seen anybody do a property tax assessment in a bazillion years, so I would even talk about that. But again, you could go back to the voters with another sales tax measure, and it would, would cost you some money to put it on the ballot. But then after that, you could, you could anticipate an additional $3 million a year in revenue just from that sales tax measure. Obviously, there's other ways to, to get sales tax money, and that's through development and bringing in car dealerships and other large, you know, tax-based, sales tax-based businesses. It's always an option. But that's a big chunk of change. And frankly, that, that money will grow as you more thoroughly develop your economic base. There's also an opportunity for an oil tax measure. And that would bring in, after the, after the vote, would bring in about $100,000 a year. So you're looking at $3.1 million in revenue you don't have now. That would be ongoing. That's a tough, it's a tough thing for a council to do, is to go back out to their community and say, I need more. Elected officials typically don't like to do that. And you're going to do that on top of what we already know is your, is your sewer and revenue, sewer and water rates. You know, so you're going to look like a council who's always just asking for money. And that's, that's going to be a challenge for you. And again, when we talked about leader, there's a cost to leadership. It's a pretty big cost. This is a pretty big cost for you guys politically. And we might as well just put that out on the table, because it is what it is, right? If nobody wants, no council member wants to be the one that says, I need more money from, from the residents. And you have a very small resident base, right? It's a very small group of people. This is not, this is not a ton of people. So, those are, those will be on the table. And now, let's talk about the other items that have, that have come up from both you and from the staff. And we heard, I think we heard this from everybody, lifeguard headquarters. Apparently, it's fallen down around here, Chief, I, that's kind of what I'm, kind of what I'm hearing. Anybody have any questions, comments, thoughts, particularly council, on, on what that project is, why it costs that much, what it includes, anything?
Nothing other than the fact that it's, as we're sitting here, the cost is escalating. It started at 9.2, and now it's at what?
35.
If we don't do something about it, it'll reach a point like a pool where it'll have to lose until it literally falls down around, you know, mid.
The thought just makes you chub.
We're closer than you think. Only one bathroom available, and stuff, so.
So I mean, we've been forced by circumstance, and possibly our own inertia to kick the can, several cans down the road. And at some point, I think we have to, at our wry, make the decisions on certain things, like the 5, the 6.2 million that we have cash on hand for, and decide whether, let's just forget about a pier restaurant, or let's put a half a million dollars aside to be able to finance the operation of some kind of food service, but we're not building anything. And with the pool, that we make a decision, you know, we'll put aside a certain amount of money to be able to, I see here, a couple hundred thousand to replace a gas line, and then put some large Band-Aids on it, and maybe get them a tough shed. So we can have women's and men's changing rooms.
Yeah. Yeah. So, those are, those are the decisions you're going to be making this afternoon, after we get lunch settled. License plate reader system upgrade.
I can speak to this.
Why don't you speak to that, Chief?
So, we, I thanked Councilman Moore earlier for focus on IT, because that's my focus in the police department upcoming. We're very reliant on technology, as is the entire city. And we, we've talked about an IT strategic plan. From a police perspective, and particularly our parking program, we've talked at length about this, and we've made great strides to move our parking program from really chalking tires and handwriting tickets to a fully integrated, top-to-bottom digital system with automated license plate readers on cars, computer, mobile digital computers, handheld citation readers that are linked to all those systems. And it's, we're really in a great place with that. But with all technology, and I think Assistant City Manager Gallegos might speak to this, technology needs to be replaced. It wears out. All of those systems are riding around in police cars and pickup trucks and Jeeps all day long, and they break, and they wear out, and they degrade, and they need to be upgraded. And we digitized our parking program five or six years ago, and that's about the shelf life typically of IT. I don't want to speak as an expert, but I think that if you want to look at when you have to, how often do you have to replace your home laptop computer or something like that? And that's where we are with that system. Why that becomes important for us is, and this speaks to an earlier slide we had when we talked about the jail closure and animal control, is an evolution of our professional staff, of our field professional staff, typically known as our community service officers. We did have a pay-to-state jail at one time, and that pay-to-state jail was closed by council policy. And we transitioned those folks to be part of our parking enforcement. And we saw a much more effective and robust parking enforcement program. There was a predicted and realized increase in parking citations and parking citation revenue. But now we have all these folks, and they're doing double duty now as animal control officers. But without these technologies available to them readily, they don't have the tools that they need. And so, as we sit here and forward think, these systems will need to be replaced and upgraded. It's not anything revolutionary. Cameras break. Computers wear out. Software needs to be upgraded, and that's just typical of information technologies. And I would dare say, the city as a whole has many of the same challenges. So for us, going forward in the police department, if I have to prioritize one thing, which is what I was asked to do, I would want us to continue to maintain the strength of that program, and that's really reliant on information technology, so.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. Questions? Any other questions about the license plate reader?
Like red light cameras? Can we put U-turn cameras on Main Street? Because we were made to kill. I see so, I mean, it's frustrating, because I can't, you know, I tell them, you're not allowed to do that, but, you know, but it's, it's constant. I think Joe, you and I were on Main Street one day, and you saw like four people do U-turns right in front of you, so.
I have other resources that I can put towards that. There is no U-turn camera, but there are red light, there are red light cameras, and, and speed cameras are something that the state is also looking at. So, but again, those are technologies. And once you institute a technology-based program, then you are, you have, if you're going to maintain that program, you have an obligation to maintain that infrastructure, those, those physical things that run on microchips. And in a, in a, in Seal Beach, where, you know, it's a coastal environment, there's fog, and there's sea air, and these things just wear out. That's really the reality.
CDS storm drain debris capture in Old Town Bridgeport. That must be Iris, I would guess.
Guys, you know that's going to be standing in between you and lunch. Many of you are aware that the state has a trash amendment update. Basically, we have to capture storm waters and break before it enters into, into bodies of water. And this case, a lot of it goes into whether it's the Volta Chica side, or it's the Eastside, Eastside, Gabriel on the first side. All our priority areas need to be captured. We have done an amazing job throughout the city installing tax-based inserts, but they don't work everywhere, though. So what this project is, is to actually install a larger hydro separator. So instead of catching it at a local level, we are actually going to be capturing it before it enters into the river area. Focus area, Old Town Bridgeport, the hill, because that's pretty much where, what Western pump station really focuses on. Now, we talked about flooding as one of our priority and one of our main concerns here in the city, which absolutely it is. So, how does that go hand-in-hand? A lot of this, of this debris that doesn't get captured actually goes into our storm drainage system, ends at that Western pump station, and of course, debris clogs our pumps, maybe our station, our commencing, and malfunction as well. Moving forward, if it gets past our pump, it gets discharged in the San Diego River area. And as we all know, trash and debris is a main water quality issue also in the San Diego River that we are working proactively on. So this is not only to stay compliant with state mandates, but also to work towards our investment.
Questions? Any other questions? Go ahead.
Just thinking of revenue, I was going through the budget again, and it made me think of, we had a conversation, Craig, about, because the comparison was Lozal, and Lozal puts OCFA on their property tax bills. Is that something that?
The social farthing versus cash contract is, I have, if you want.
Yeah, yeah. I actually, I actually tried it. And you can't do it. It's a, it's a, it's one of the glitches with the OCFA contract. If everyone was a property tax city, there'd be a lot less discussions of that kind of stuff. But yeah, you can't, you can't move from a property tax city, can't move from a cash contract city to a property tax city. I spent, I don't know, three years of my life trying. Yeah. It would be a huge cost saver, right? If you could, if you could place that on the, but again, you've got a really small tax base here for that kind of money that.
2030 is when any discussion
To con, when the contract's up?
At JPA, so.
Yeah.
Do we know how much part of the money we have left? Because we decided on most of it last year, but I think there was still a portion left.
800,000.
Yes, 800,000.
Okay. Can we, can we add that to the, to the total, or is that not added? Can you not?
Yes, the council, council can make that decision. I know right now, some of the things that they're looking at, or other IT items and mid-year adjustments.
Okay, so that, is that our, has that, have those dollars? Okay, so that, is that our, has that, have those dollars, those decisions have not been made yet? Okay. All right. I want lunch to get cold. How are we on lunch, Deb?
I can open everything up if you're ready.
Okay. You wanna open? You wanna pause and eat? Pause and eat? All right. Let's eat. All right, welcome back. I think we need to give a big round of applause to Deb for feeding us. Would you sign off on that? Thank you. So this is really, all the other stuff was important, but this is really where the deciding points kinda come in for you all. Again, this is consensus, this is your thoughts right now. Based on what you decide now, that will go back to Jill and her staff and they'll figure out how to do whatever it is you come up with. So I wanna finish going through the, the items that we talked about that are on your priority list. Pool. We all, we have the, I have the pool at McGaw School from everyone. That is, that is an issue, that is a priority, everyone wants a pool. Everyone is terrified of the eighteen, now the eighteen point five million dollar cost of the pool. Who would talk about the pool? From a staff perspective? Anybody, does anybody like?
Iris and I.
All right. Tell us a little bit about the pool. A little bit.
There's some little guy, I think everybody's willing to learn the history behind it. So we last left it with a conceptual study over at McGaw Elementary School to reconstruct the pool, given various options. And of course with the chief and it was public input and public input as well. So we left it at that point, looking for direction on how to proceed should we move forward or not. But in an interim, which Chief Bailey will speak to more, is the ability to operate and maintain that facility. First and foremost, it's keeping that pool warm enough for use. We have noticed that there is a gas line issue, provide adequate gas service to the pool heater to keep that up to date, or I'm sorry, to keep it functioning properly. An initial conversation with a gas company to put our own dedicated heater to board that service is somewhere in the magnitude of a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars, given that we are going to be likely curbing a cross Seal Beach Boulevard to connect to the gas main.
Yeah, so over the last few years, we're at the end of the line from the gas line. The school gets it first and then we, our heater gets it at the end. So right now, our heater's set to be working at half speed because that's the amount of gas we have. And so we, we get cold water, which is this time of year is difficult. So I, I guess just to keep it short, there's two things right now that the pool needs and one is changing rooms and one is this new gas line to, if we're gonna keep limping that along. Now, that's not to say the whole thing won't crack in half next year, because I think we're there on the useful life of it and that's why I know the new pool is up here. And as a reminder, you know, having a pool and teaching swim lessons is the number one way to prevent drowning and drowning is the number one cause of death for children one to four, so I'll leave you with that.
Gotta get the safety pitch in there at all times. Thank you, appreciate that. Again, prior councils, nobody in this room should probably never let it get to this, to this stage, right? And, and that, this, you are dealing with the results of prior councils kicking this down the road. So now it's in your lap. And now it's eighteen million dollars as opposed to one million dollars or whatever it would have been when it really needed to be done. And so again, as you're, as you're thinking about your priorities and where you should be putting your dollars, you know, not making a decision about something is a decision that has really long-term, heavy financial impact on, on the community. And so, so if you just do the gas line, chief, does that mean that the pool's still operating, people can still get in it? What does, what does, what if they just did the gas line? What does that mean?
So the gas line is a big Band-Aid. With that, if, if we were to build a new pool, then we would already have the gas line in place. But right now, we, we have to close some weeks during January, February, sometimes November, depending on the weather. And this would make it so we could keep the temperature constant and we could keep the pool open consistently. That, along with changing rooms, are the two things we, we need to get done soon to keep it going. Yes, sir?
Do you have a head camera? How many people, not necessarily January, February, I'm sure it's pretty light out there. How many people use the pool?
So I don't have it on the top of my head. I know that our annual pass holders, I think the number's right around three hundred. And so that's three hundred people that pay for an annual pass. And we have other programs that are, you can buy sixty swims or thirty-two swims. And then obviously we have swim lessons and recreation swim that we expanded greatly this last year. The inflatable obstacle course, there's a council member more. And so I can't give you a great, an exact number, but I, I can get those numbers for you and I'm happy to do that. It's really easy with our recreation system to do that.
It's on everybody's mind, a decision. And you've got, what, four, four million dollars set aside out of the eighteen? So, so if they didn't do the gas line, it would be eighteen-five? And that would include a new gas line?
I think the gas line's in the eighteen.
Okay, all right, okay, all right. So the Band-Aid, the big Band-Aid is two hundred thousand, that's a big, that's an expensive Band-Aid. But okay, so, so any other questions about the pool or what the options are there? Yes, Pam?
So if, if we redo the gas line, that, that would be what we would do anyway? So that piece would be out of the way? It wouldn't be different if it was a brand new pool? It'd be the same gas line and?
I think I'd let Iris, Iris speak to that.
I, I think that if council said directs us to do so, to start with the gas line first, we will be sizing it appropriately. And we are also given direction to follow up with the rest of the entire pool. And it will be reusable, of course.
Can we use, to do the gas line, can we use money that's already set aside for the pool?
That is an option to be sold.
So we don't have to come up with two hundred thousand dollars new money? We could use existing money that's already in the pool? I see that's one of my mistakes.
That's already earmarked for the pool.
Affirmative.
Yes.
What's the current state of the pool? Is it good for the next five years if we fix the gas line?
I mean, the, the short answer to that is no. You know, if, if you go and walk around the pool, there's cracks and unlevel pavement on the decking that's been filled with, you know, whatever. I can't, the name's alluded to, math plastic or math, yes. And so like just walking around the, the pool is not great. We do, water does leak out of the pool, so we lose water because of the shell of the pool. So the, the pool is really, I know this term, you may have heard it a bunch, but it's really at the end of its useful life. And so, you know, I just wanna see it continue and that's why I've, I've asked for this gas line so we can swim year-round, you know. I know you think, oh, no one swims in, in the January, December, January, February, but in fact, they do. And our last one program is about the same year-round. People are in there and it's, you know, it's used all day long, year-round. So that's why I would like to, whatever happens, I, you know, we still wanna use the pool. We still wanna have the pool available, in my mind, but anyway.
Lisa?
I could definitely go along with the, the, those gas lines. If it's paid for, I'll have money to borrow and set aside. That would be a, a key thing for me to see. I don't know that we will ever have enough money to do the, the big green job. I, I can't imagine a city like Seal Beach not having a pool. That just blows my mind that we could possibly at some point in the future not have a pool. But as I've seen and you've explained, we're, you know, we're one breakdown away from having to scuttle the whole thing, is my understanding. In the meantime, let's, a gas line, heater thousand already paid for, to me, that's, that's an easy thing.
I just have to say, somebody gave me a, a copy of the Sun newspaper from two thousand and eleven. So I was kinda able to read through it and they talked about the pool and it had five years left of life from two thousand and eleven.
So tweaking it out.
I can tell you, since then, we've had to do a number of things. We've replaced the heater, we've shut down. Most of you know there's two pools there. And one of them's a small, like, learning pool that's a fiberglass shell. And that shell is shedding fiberglass, so we don't allow, since that, we just shut, we don't use that pool anymore. And the other thing, those two pools are on the same pump system, which you couldn't bill now because that's against code. And part of it is because this fiberglass shell is shedding fiberglass, so it's on the same pump system, so it gets into the main pool. So there's just a myriad of problems. So we're just, I mean, Band-Aid after Band-Aid after Band-Aid is where we're at, I'm happy.
So, well.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Lisa.
So the funds that we have for the restaurant at the end of here, I've talked to many successful restaurant owners and all of them said it's not feasible from a financial perspective. They wouldn't, they wouldn't make the money, uh, because it's too far from walk. So would you be able to take those funds? I mean, do they need to stay in that? Can we use that for the pool?
Those, those funds that we talked about, the money for the pool and the money for the restaurant, those were set aside based on your council direction. They can be unset aside and reset aside for something else in whatever level you want. If you wanna take, you know, three hundred thousand from the pier restaurant and do something else with that, but leave the other money, you can do that, you can do any combination of financing that you want with those, with those two set asides.
Since, since we got that money from the insurance, is it's just allocated for the pier part or not?
That's a bar of a question.
I don't believe so.
Oh.
So once we receive those funds and that project is closed out, that money's been sitting aside for the city to make a decision on. I know I would have to look to Iris, because I know there's some utility line ailment and some items that need to continue. But with that, those funds are set aside.
Yeah, usually what you get is a release from the insurance company saying, you know, this settles all the claims, but it doesn't say, and thou must use it to buy a new restaurant.
No, and it, and, and like Carol mentioned, it could be broken up, you know, maybe you put a Snatchak there or, you know, if, if there's not enough to build a facility. But that's something, if you wanna set that money aside, to do that at some point. You, you know, there's no set, let's be honest. My feedback on that, you know, size or, there's nothing set yet. And again, there's lots of underground work that would need to happen for the city if we.
So just to conduct to what Nick and Martha said, the insurance money that we received is for the loss that we incurred on corporate suppliers. So to say that if there is a string attached to how we use it, then the simple answer is no. Now, if we move forward in trying to construct a restaurant on top of there, then there is added infrastructure that is needed to support the restaurant depending on what the scope of work is going to be, like a larger scale restaurant that has a lot of crime or like something that is smaller in scale, that is fairly simple and doesn't have a lot of grease or need a lot of additional plumbing associated with it.
So like Nathan said, you know, eighteen million dollars, that's, you know, that's one way to go. How, how far would whether we can go to or just even four or five million dollars, could we re-plaster the pool? I mean, I know you pointed out how your guys had to scoot it down in hatch holes. What if, is that feasible or?
I, I would tell you that over, you know, over the years and with all the different studies that have been done at the pool, I don't think that would be a good use of money. Just, and, you know, I don't have the studies in front of me, but there's, there's just been a number of things over the year where they're worried about underneath the pool shell, the pool shell itself. All of these things would indicate to me it wouldn't, it would be good money after that on that deal.
And just to count the numbers, I can add to what Chief Bailey said, that we have looked into possibility of rehabilitating the pool with its existing configuration. And studies after studies, we have come to the conclusion that rehabbing it isn't the most efficient use and effective use of money. Furthermore, we looked at also different configurations versus actually having a green ground pool. Again, it, it's going to be a wash at the end of the day, so we recommend that if we are gonna be moving forward with a pool, it would be doing it right.
Thank you.
And then you've got about ten million dollars worth of park amenities and facility upgrades. Who, whose deal is that?
Yes. What Iris and I had discussed, that, that ten million dollar figure is not, I, I don't have a list of five things that that pays for. But it is aging infrastructure, just like the pool. Its playgrounds, its court services, its, you know, modernization of amenities, the safety, all that kind of stuff is, is built into that. Even just landscape amendments and stupors and all of those things. I mean, our parks require regular investments, just like in dance.
I'm sorry, we have ten million set aside for this or you're asking?
This is, this is our estimated cost of trying to get things up to speed. So in a perfect world, we'd have ten million dollars and we'd be like, yeah, great, yeah. The playgrounds and all those kinds, we don't, we don't have that. What our proposal would be is that if you wanted to invest in parks, which I think, you know, hopefully all want to invest in parks, is putting aside annual funds for that purpose so that we are on a rotating basis of, okay, this year is this playground, next year is that playground, whatever it may be. So it covers the infrastructure and the courts on a, on a basis so that we aren't having this conversation about all of our parks after painting the can down for, you know, a calendar many years. So we're not, we're not doing, repeating the pool conversation five years from now because all of the parks, you know, the equipment has fallen apart and no one can play on the courts and, and those type of things. So, yeah.
To add to Alexis's point and the not-so-fun stuff that I talked about, it is more of a compliance standpoint as well. Back in twenty thirteen, basically a master plan was created for parks in general. And of course, the amenities is a big thing and that, that's kinda like how parks make life better. But also the compliance issue that we don't think about as, as a general public, the AD compliance or making sure that our playground equipment is accessible. All those great things that actually go into making a park needs to also be reconsidered as well. So again, to delve in about what Alexis said, is to create a set aside fund to continue to constantly maintain it. And as we all know, preventative maintenance is always better than actually doing an overhaul in, under an emergency need.
So the, the issue, let me, let me frame this a bit for you. I think the issue is there's about ten million dollars worth of needs in your park for upgrades and maintenance. If the council chooses to put some money aside for park maintenance, you can choose what that amount is. And then once you say, we, we wanna do a million dollars. So you say a million dollars, Jill and, and the ladies will get together and they'll talk about, they'll have, they'll put the list of parks in front of them, what's got the greatest need, where's the biggest bang for the buck, where are the most used parks? And then they'll come back to you with a recommendation about where that million dollars should be spent. Does that make sense?
I, I would have a hard time answering that question in the absence of a macro view as to where we stand in terms of operating budgets and how much we're gonna have to cut out of operating budgets to be able to balance our budget. How much of this money for capital projects would have to come out of the operating budget? I mean, to, to try and do these things in one discrete thing at a time seems a little bit clunky to me. I don't know how to answer the question because I don't have a handle on the macro.
And I, I, I appreciate that completely. I think what we're trying to do is give staff enough direction to see where their interests lie so that they can come back to you with the full picture. So for, for example, I don't know, we can talk about the park amenities more. No, you don't have the full picture of what that ten million dollars would buy you. But, but you, but you could say, I do have an interest in the parks.
Well, I do have an interest in the parks, clearly. I, I don't know where the ten million comes from, that's what my, you know, they can tell me what they would like to spend ten million dollars on, but it's like, okay, but where is the money gonna come from? How are we ever gonna get there? And, and if I may too, they would know inside their own universes and responsibilities what their priorities, they would like their priorities to be based on. they would like their priorities to be based on what they've done in other cities, and based on their experience, and based on the condition of different assets and things like that. So they should, they should be able to tell us what their priorities might be. Is that, is this ten million dollars out of their feedback, or?
Uh, yes, it's their feedback. Yeah, I didn't make that up. Yeah, so, when you, when you set your priorities today, there's going to be way more money than you have to spend. Right? You're gonna, you're gonna say, I, I want a pool, and I want a pier, a restaurant on the pier, and I want ten million dollars worth of park improvements. We all know, we don't have that kind of money, right? So, what we're gonna, what Jill's gonna do, and, and Barbara's gonna do, is they're gonna go back and look at your priorities, and they're gonna figure out a plan as to how to fund those, and how long that's gonna take, and what resources they're gonna be able to use to do that, in, in light of the operating budget as well.
One of my wife's favorite restaurants is a, uh, a buffet. And my problem with any buffet is, I'm sure I'm not the only one in this room, is you go to the first station, you see all this beautiful food, you fill up your plate. And then you go to the next station, you see all this beautiful food, and you fill up your plate. So, literally, in the context of the entire line, I would take less of this and more of that. So we don't see the entire line, is, is my picking and choosing ten million here and things like that. And without knowing what's down the buffet line is, is a little bit awkward to me.
I know, I understand. Go ahead, Jill.
Well, one way of looking at this is that make decisions where we can make decisions. The pool is an example. If there winds up being consensus amongst everybody in this room, that in the unforeseeable future, as well as the foreseeable future, we will not have the revenue nor the ability to borrow money to build a brand-new pool on that facility on that side. So therefore, we have a little over four million dollars that is sitting there. Now, we could then decide, okay, let's take a million dollars, put it aside for the Band-Aids, for as long as that pool can be Band-Aided, and knowing that we can, we can patch the decade. We can build or buy a facility to have dressing rooms. And then take what's left and say, okay, let's, let that be the first seed money that goes into maintaining the rest of our parks, with regard to replacing the equipment and whatever. And then, the, uh, with regard to the food service on the pier, we've never really reached the decision whether that's yes or no. We stopped after we had a consultant give us, they never even gave it to us. I mean, I saw, you know, three different proposals ranging from a full restaurant down to something that was like a food truck configuration, to something that was involving, um, shipping containers that could be paid for within the budget of the existing insurance money that we have. So there's a couple of, of things that we, we can make decisions about without encumbering monies that we haven't gotten yet, and they never can answer, you know, to your concern.
My concern is we have pools of money laying around, uh, for a lot of different things, and there's, those pools of money are shrinking. Every year, the buying power of that pool of money gets smaller and smaller and smaller, and we don't make the decision, so that four million used to have buying power of X, now it's got buying power of X minus. And so it's like, lo, and I'm not saying we should make a decision about any of these things, but it's hard to make a decision about one thing in the absence of knowing what the, what the whole buffet. Is there a way for us to free up some of this money and do a pool, or is it, is it not? You know, I don't know how much, what flexibilities we have in the, in these, the, the capital set asides that we, we do have, so.
Barbara, you want to answer that on the flexibility on the capital?
I think, um, the idea of this, this exercise is staff met and put down top priorities, and put up what you have set aside. So you have money from the pier set aside, and then you also have money from the pool set aside. So the option is continue those two items and leave them there. Or take a step back and look at the, this listing of other items, these other priorities in the city, and utilize those funds to these items. Additionally, I think, um, we mentioned it first, and now I'm, I was kind of thinking, I wish we could have mentioned it at the end, is we have a couple revenue opportunities. One of those is, um, a sales tax measure, taking that other half cent. And I, I think, uh, council members, we discussed this, that if we don't utilize it, another entity can. The state can, can come in, the county can come in, and they can take. On the sales tax measure.
They can take sales tax.
They can take, utilize that half cent, so cap, there's a cap on it. So we can't keep, you can only go a half cent, but another.
So that half a percent that, that is between us and the cap right now could be taken by the county or the state, or something like that.
Yes. And I, and we get nothing. And that's why this is here before you, because I say, keep it in our city. If we keep it in our city, that half cent stays with us. If the county takes it, we don't get it. Yes. So I think one of those opportunities, so let's say, um, we'll utilize the pool. Although there's a lifeguard headquarters, there's the parks, there's, um, the restaurant pier, there's the main street maintenance, there's an IT assessment, all these things are before you, and do we, um, and we don't have the expenditures going on. But you can, we can, um, I've talked to a consultant, we can begin polling. We can look out to the community and say to the community and get polling decisions on if, can this pass in our city this half cent? To keep it in our city, to find a lifeguard headquarters, or find a pool if that's their choice. What is that that we're looking for? We can go out and poll those individuals. It's important to know that I think a big percentage of our voters are sixty-five and over, and are fifty-seven percent of our likely voters. So if we were to take that into consideration, and our first step would be where council will tell us to do a polling, we'll look into that. But what this exercise is saying is, we have money set aside for the pool. It's under council discretion if we continue to keep that there, or if we take it and put it among some of these other projects. But my understanding is you're getting dots, I think they're really getting dots. And then council, you get to decide what your priorities, I don't know how many dots you're giving them.
Against, well.
Against six dots.
We number the dots?
Yeah.
And then council can decide and give us direction on what the priorities are, and then we're gonna focus on what that is. And in addition, um, they did include that prop to a sales tax measure for a half of that tax. That sales tax measure would bring three point five, which is three point five million dollars to the city if no other entity takes it, like I mentioned, the county or the state. So, um, that's another opportunity, but this exercise is, like council member Kelly mentioned, to let this council decide. Decisions were made in the past that that money was set aside for the pool and the pier, um, restaurant. But maybe that's not the focus of the city now. Now, you council members can decide and give us direction on, and I'll use, use an example. Let's say your priority are, I'm going to use Councilmember Morse, because I know he, he likes IT, and, you know, we have a phone system, I love our phone system, I, I can answer calls from anywhere, I get messages from anywhere. Our phone system is amazing, and that was led by Councilmember Morse, and we were able to implement that. So let's say that focus is getting an IT assessment for the city, which is very much needed, a full citywide IT assessment, because we are falling behind. And I'll, I'll let Patrick know when it comes to that. But you can choose to take that money that's sitting there now and move it to these other functions. And then again, well, as Carol won't go over, is we'll get dots to make that, those marching orders. And then you make the decision and give us the marching orders through the dots, we'll be able to, um, make decisions about it.
Yes, I, I kind of have a, there are positions that if we don't do anything with this money just sitting there, it costs more for these projects every year. You know, just we're just getting in a worse and worse position. Maybe we do relook, you know, if the pool's gonna really cost eighteen million, maybe we put that money towards the lifeguard station, you know, where everyone uses the beach, or a million people, or, in the summer, or whatever it is. If we, if we can at least make a decision, let's use this money constructively for one thing, at least we're doing something with that money, leveraging it for, you know, something that everyone uses.
You're absolutely correct, and as the direction that we're looking for today is to determine what your priorities are, and then get these opportunities implemented, and then possibly putting as much money to it as we can if we do a prop to, to a sales tax measure, which is going to be a difficult road. You know, our constituents are vocal, and they, you know, they don't want to spend that extra money. But again, we don't have additional revenue sources to come into the city, so while you think about making these decisions, and if it is elect or tower, then how are we going to bring in revenues to focus that money towards that project, or to make sure this big project happens? These things only have so much life, so as for the pool, as for the headquarters, as for their parks, you know, over time, these diminishing returns, we have to take, we can't keep pushing the can down the road. We have to look at additional revenue opportunities, albeit small. An oil tax measure me and Nick are working on right now, and that's a, um, pay, it's an interesting, um, equation where the first three hundred barrels are free, and they pay one cent, um, tax on out-of-city barrel tax. Well, we want to push that through, but it's going to cost us money now to do polling and to do move that forward, and it's going to be a little painful. But again, is that the right thing to do for the city? And I think part of the discussion earlier is, there's hard decisions that you need to make, and how do we make them, and what priorities do you folks have for your constituents to put the dots on the, on the board?
Why don't, why don't we kind of, why don't we just kind of listen? Yeah, why, why don't we just kind of, kind of figure out, go through the rest of it, and if you're still uncomfortable, we can.
But I did want to say one thing, and I never knew this before, even though, um, I've been around now for ten months. I have no idea, because I don't like taxes anymore than the rest, anybody else. And I, I get the principle that you tax what you don't want. So if you increase sales tax, you are saying basically, we don't want your business. But from a, the fact that we are tucked into, uh, the, the megalopolis in Southern California, and right next to Long Beach and Huntington Beach, and they're already at the max, and we're not, I don't think people come to Seal Beach to save a half a percent on their sales tax. That's not the, the, the end-all economic incentive. But I also didn't know that the county could take that away from us. They could step up and say, we'll take that half a percent before we, as a people, as a, as a town, because we don't gain anything by not charging that sales tax. I mean, we're not getting more business because we charge the half a percent less sales tax, you follow me? It's kind of like, and if they're gonna take it, I mean, my, my initial feeling is like, oh, no, we just, we just waived our sales tax, and, whoa, we can't do that again. Let's, you know, wait a few years, wait till my second term. But, you know, it's kind of like if, if the, if Orange County could step in front of us, or the state of California, or some other taxing entity could step in front of us, I got a, I got a big issue with that.
On beach.
That would be irresponsible on our part as a city, not step up and take that, or somebody else takes it away from us.
Like Barbara said, I'll step in. It is very common for communities to obtain a public opinion poll to gauge, you know, what the community's priorities are, and to sort of test out how likely a sales tax measure would be if it were placed on the ballot.
In the context, yeah, the half a percent, we go to some other entity. That's, that's the motivating factor to me.
I'm not a pollster, but I, we get to the pollsters to ju, come up with questions, they come up with questions that sort of ask people, well, if that were the factor, because I've seen the polls. If that were the factor, would you vote yes? If this were the factor, would you vote yes? And then, you know, based on what the, the results of the poll are, the, the pollsters can usually say, well, this would have a good chance of success, this would not have a good chance of success. And then you make your decision based on, you know, whether you think it's got a likelihood of success, putting on the, the ballot.
Has that been done in other cities where the county takes the remaining percent?
Yes, I, I know that in Beverly Hills, they were considering doing a, kind of this prophylactic tax, where it's that this tax only goes into effect if the county adopts a sales tax. Uh, all the way to the top. So I think that it has happened in LA County, I don't know about Orange County. Basically, the county's going to have to put a ballot measure county-wide for a sales tax measure that takes the sales tax all the way to the maximum of ten point.
At risk the county doesn't care about Seal Beach's last half a percent, so.
What's the timeline to get, for, to be, to make a decision before putting something on the ballot this November?
So, the, um, the ballot materials, basically, you would have to, the council would adopt a resolution, adopting the, or putting the ordinance to increase the tax, deciding on what the, the ballot question says, and then telling the county that you're going to consolidate this measure with the November twenty twenty-four ballot. That usually has to be done in July. The draft date of the revenue is August, but the registrar of voters usually says, we need it a month in advance.
That gives us like four months.
Yeah.
Do we get to name the initiative that shows up on the ballot? Can we put our own words to describe it?
Yeah, actually, you will run on that. There's a bit of a rule. It has to be seventy-five words, and, uh, it can't be overly persuasive. And so drafting a ballot question is actually kind of a fun legal exercise.
If I make a comment, um, Nick, is that we would begin polling now, because we would need to, um, hire someone as quickly as possible to begin the assessment, to see, um, where they're at there. But again, it begins with the priorities that we set forth. If, if building some of these things need to be built into that polling, we need to know that. We need to, one, find out what the priorities are, and then, two, make a very quick action on polling. And then, if it's not going to pass, we want to know that now before we keep putting money into it. So polling's about thirty thousand. With that polling, we would be able to determine if we can move forward on this. And if a prop to a sales tax measure passes, it, the first year won't be three million, it'll be closer to one point five. But then, you know, as measure BP is, you saw those results, um, you'll see those with measure BP.
I like the prophylactic idea, but we're also staring at this fifteen million dollar hole, and this is carry out of that fifteen million dollars or something like that would help, would help this city.
Well, why don't we finish up going through the projects, so that you all have a good understanding of them? The Eighth and Tenth Street parking lots, assume that's you, Iris.
So, uh, Eighth and Tenth Street parking lot, obviously, this is the area that serves one of the most iconic features we have in the city, which is in the pier and the pier area. So Eighth and Tenth Street parking lot, obviously, yes, in the playground area, absolutely. Um, so, I don't think that I really need to explain to the visual, um, that what you've seen out in the parking lot, i- i- it needs help. It's, uh, pieces of asphalt are falling apart, and we need to repay it. Because it's a parking lot, we cannot use a restricted fund for it, it's not considered our streets or our roadway. So what we use to repay funds that we use to redo our streets and roadways, such as gas tax, and two, uh, RMRA money, unfortunately, we cannot apply, uh, and use it towards that, uh, purpose. So, um, that's why that's what is asked. And as a component of it as well, we need to do ADA upgrades in the area. Accessibility from the parking lot to, to the rest of town, to the beach, to the pier, um, needs ADA accessibility as well. So as part of that effort, when you touch it, you need to upgrade it. So, in addition, this is going to be, um, on phase two or three to, um, the restoration project and the pier button project that we currently have out to bid right now. So, um, this is going to clean up the area and make it compliant. So, um, that's in the order of eight hundred thousand dollars. The last time, we kind of just did a rough order of magnitude. And, um, depending on the construction, construction on it, this may or may not be really with it.
And it should be clear that, that this is not a slurry ceiling job. Power, power riding your bike through there.
Councilwoman.
Are they down to the aggregate level, and the?
It's down to the dirt.
Are they really down? So it has to be completely redone all the way down in the dirt?
Yes. So it includes the bathrooms, so, I'm sorry. The bathrooms and their, uh, concrete pier button is actually currently out to bid. It's currently out to bid already, so we're going to target to get that completed. So this is a different phase of the pure restoration, pure area restoration.
That's part of our budget already, right?
That's right.
Is there, um, any grant money possible or included with regard to the ADA portion, the ramps or the?
Um, I can't say that there is no grant money. Um, outside funding is always available. However, are we one of the targeted communities to provide for? Um, outside funding is always available, however, are we one of the targeted communities to provide for any money? No.
And it's your fault, though.
So one, one of the things that Nathan kind of alluded to was, you know, is this, this is not just a slurry ceiling, this is a full reconstruction. Again, your maintenance schedule, you know, are you putting aside money regularly for maintenance? If you had been slurry sealing this parking lot every three to five years, depending on the weather, right? You wouldn't be having this eight hundred thousand dollar cost now.
Actually, we have the time, the Eighth Street parking lot looks like a pool, so we can...
So there you go, hey, there's an idea.
Unfortunately, headquarters looks like a pool.
Yeah. Um, all right, the Main Street specific plan, modernized old plan, community engagement. Uh, I assume that's Alexa?
That would be me.
Okay.
Uh, this one is not infrastructure, um, and it, it, it's not critical to life and safety, so I want to acknowledge that right off the bat. At the same time, this is a good plan, um, just, just like our use, and so, and we offer a planning perspective and a community development perspective of the institution. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were on the Main Street specific.
No, I, I, are we done, are we done with, I thought we'd kind of talked with the PR already.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nope, we're good, yeah.
Yep, all right.
I always have to be sure Nathan is, you know...
Main Street specific plan, we have one in existence, it's more than twenty years old. I mean, there are pieces of it, honestly, from a planning perspective, that are kind of hilarious at this point. Because you, you have to look at that to evolve, and it does, everybody evolved, and, you know, progressing things. So, uh, it's, it's, it's not cheap, and it's not because we're just going to sit down and write a plan.
What is it, what would it involve? I saw in the carryover, we have like three hundred thousand dollars from Main Street right now. Is that what we're talking about?
No.
Okay, so this is separate and apart, and how much would it cost? What would it involve? What does it look like?
To do it right?
No, but...
Would be a very large community engagement project. What is, what is important about Main Street, what we like, what we want it to look like in the future? So a lot of the money is engagement. Um, and then we start piecing together between the infrastructure and the planning, come up with a document that says, okay, this is where we want to go, this is going to be our guiding principle for the next twenty years.
We started, we started this process right before COVID. Yeah, consulting, and we had a group that met and started the discussion about concepts and how we could redesign Main Street to retain the kind of look that the community wants, but also upgrade it, and be able to do it incrementally, so it wouldn't be twelve million dollars that you understand one fell swoop. I mean, there's things like signage, lighting, um, you can look at the, the intersections, you know, those were done with stamped concrete, and the color is only, what about that thick, I believe? Even less maybe, and that's all crack, and it can't be repaired, and it's starting to look like crap. And the number of people commenting about the thing, try either skateboarding, pushing a stroller, or any other wheeled device over that, you know, when you're crossing the street at the three intersections, it's, it needs to be upgraded.
Where would this money come from?
It's part of the priority choices that we're looking to make, I mean, it's general fund money, so it's, it would be a directive choosing not to do something else on this list.
I told you this was not going to be fun, didn't I? Okay, other questions about this one?
Did we upgrade lighting, or did we not upgrade lighting a few years ago?
Uh, what we did was, uh, we were finished the polls and converted the, um...
To LCD, or...
Correct.
CB and then LED.
Sorry.
Okay.
And, uh, terrible if I made that one a little bit, um, uh, we, I did get a chance to touch on the Bridgeport alley item, and it, it's not a, it's not a glamorous item, but I still want to touch on it as well. Um, it is, uh, in the Bridgeport community, uh, we have a number of alleys serving the residential area. Similar to the parking lots, alleys don't qualify for, um, our restricted street funds either. So, um, I'm sure all of you are very well aware that, uh, it kind of looks very similar to our Eighth and Tenth Street parking lot, where it does, again, need help in that area. So, um, this is one of those where, um, it has been always listed as unfunded need, um, but we're definitely in that, in that timeframe where probably we can't wait anymore on that either. So, um, it may likely, I mean, it could possibly become, um, maybe a safety issue or undrivable condition, so hopefully, uh, consistently move down this trajectory.
Right? Thank you, Iris. All right. So this, this section is, as we've talked about, this organization does not run without its, without its employees and without proper systems in place for City Hall and the staff there to do their jobs. And so, um, these are some of the items that, um, the team came up with that will help the city function better. Again, these are not going to be glamorous, these are not going to be things that are being seen by the public, but they, they sure are going to make this, this place run like it should, with the, with the proper tools. This is like, these, I kind of equate these things to like, um, if you have a steak, and you can use a steak knife, or you can use a butter knife. Your staff is using a butter knife right now in a lot of these things, and, and it's very difficult to get the job done. Um, who wants to talk about the IT master plan?
I can do that.
Yay, Patrick's on.
Thank you. We're talking about the...
IT master plan?
So information technology. So it's no, it's no big secret, uh, and we've talked about this a lot, about investing in IT, and it's become ever-present in our personal lives and in our work lives, right? I mean, what has accelerated that is the pandemic, really, uh, for a lot of our residents and businesses and people who visit us. And so in that, there's a lot of needs, whether it's the police department with their body-won cameras, where it's the software needs, and all of the different departments to, to make us more efficient. Uh, these things are critical. So what an IT master plan can do comprehensively and citywide is to assess our needs, to, to predict sort of where we need to go, or not predict, to, to basically inform us so that we have, uh, the best information available to us, so that we can, um, guide our IT systems, not only, uh, more efficiently, but also, uh, to meet the needs of our internal and external customers. You know, one of the, the, the big, uh, milestones for us was the phone system, you know, as simple as a phone is. But there was a big change, I mean, we went to a cloud-based system, uh, that's a big deal. And I think overall, and I can tell you, because I would be receiving those complaints, right, Jay Bailey? That I think it's been going, uh, fairly well. Uh, and like Finance Director Arnato mentioned, that she really likes the phone system, I think it's been really great. And, uh, quite honestly, it's really increased our cus- the level of customer service that we provide our customers, so. Um, so that's a great enhancement. So we need to know, we need to do an assessment to find out, and, and we need somebody who's an expert in this field to, to identify all the critical needs that we have in the city, and to project a three-to-five master, three-to-five-year master plan, so we know exactly where we're going. And more importantly, to finance those things. It's one thing to say we want all of these things, going back to your point, but to plan for them, uh, and to invest in them, and to, to finance them is, is really important. So that's what an IT master plan, in short, is and can do for us. And I think it's a, a pillar of one of the critical, um, IT, um, objectives that we're trying to do. In, in talking with, uh, Councilmember Moore, uh, in our staff, we have an IT working group, security is a big deal. Uh, you might have seen recently, the city of Long Beach had, uh, a hacker who'd get into their system and caused a lot of problems. And those are just like, you know, quality of life issues, those are, those are costs to the city. You know, they're not able to process billing and, um, there's, the website was taken over. I mean, just all of these little things that, uh, that are a problem. We had a ransomware attack a few years back, uh, right on Christmas Eve. That impacted what the services that we provide. So all these things are critical, and we need to stay ahead of the curve, instead of playing catch-up. You know, when I, when I started this in this city twelve years ago, and the chief alluded to this, you know, it, I came from a city where IT was a big part of the investment in that city. And coming here and seeing CSOs walking around, riding tickets, getting out of their car, and placing them on there, where we are now, with the ALPR systems and, you know, the ticketing systems, the software that we use to enhance all of those things, I think it's not only good for, for, for us as employees, but also the residents in Seal Beach. So essentially, that's what an IT master plan can do for us, and I think it's, it's a good investment, and, and I think, I'd recommend that, that we, uh, go ahead and, and start and do that, so.
How much is it?
Uh, it's, it's about up to seventy-five thousand, uh, to do a, a comprehensive, a full comprehensive. I, what I'd really like to see is really actionable items. We, we've had sort of these smaller plans and studies done, but the financing portion wasn't there. The, the steps to get there weren't there, and it wasn't comprehensive. So this will really kind of a, a real big picture, and really dig down into, and interview all of the departments to see what their needs are, um, and, and even probably, uh, interview the councilmembers to see what they're interested in.
Didn't we have this as part of the budget for any, or...
Yeah, it's, it's, it's currently a, a, a part of, of, of the budget, um, and we have it in our, uh, CIP, as part of our CIP, uh, IT CIP for...
It's not funny, for the IT assessment.
Oh, IT assessment, yeah.
So the, the full assessment that Patrick's talking about, this would be additional funds, to have full assessment and review of the city in its entirety.
Okay, yeah, I thought we mentioned it last year, forgot.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't know, uh, I can watch the loop to that.
We, you know, there was money set aside, um, for the phone system assessment, the phone system implementation, I think a lot of, and, and the IT analysis, but not full funding, but there's ID, a full ID system.
I think, I mean, I think it's definitely needed, because if you, if we fix one thing, and we don't look at all of the different departments, then that one piece will work well, but maybe if we look at everything all together, we can be interfacing with different software systems so that everything is better. So, and in my eyes, it's very important, but...
I, I see it as very important. Well, the problem with technology, though, is it's rapidly changing, and we need, it's hard for us to know what we need and want in the context of what's coming technologically down the pipe. And so looking over the horizon is a big deal about this, because years ago, companies were coming up with their IT plans and implementing spending millions, and by the time they actually got it done, the whole thing was obsolete, replaced by new technology. So we need to have something that's over the horizon, too. And I don't think we are qualified to talk about what's over the horizon.
Right, and Councilmember, you're, you're absolutely right. The other thing that we're, we may not necessarily be thinking about are the unglamorous things, the backend stuff, the servers, the things that are, you know, keeping all of that video recording by law, that we need to keep a retention of, of video, uh, the body-won cameras and, and whatnot, the servers that, uh, are making the systems go. Um, not just the, the future things, like the artificial intelligence and, and all of the different software, that's one thing. But it's maintaining our current systems even, um, as part of this plan.
I know in, in, in the private sector, there's been a big movement to the cloud, because then you don't have to maintain your own servers, and it reduces the expenses. So that's something that they could probably introduce as part of the IT.
Something I learned last week at the mayor's elected academy, they had a show of hands, how many cities have been approached by, um, artificial intelligence mega storage companies for their data? And they, the question was, does the city have to open up through records app, uh, everything that they have? All of the information, and several cities have already been requested to give up all of their information. So it's kind of like, that's so that the, the artificial intelligence cloud can possess that and work that, uh, artificial intelligence and magic, if you will, on all of that stuff. So this is a brand-new issue I never even thought about until last week, and some, several cities raised their hand, that they have already been requested to, to give up all of their public-related data.
These are all good questions.
The other part about IT that I found, especially in the police department, where we've become very reliant on a lot of different technologies, is the maintenance and upkeep and day-to-day service of all of those technology systems, software systems. The city has a, a software company that it uses, um, but I think it's worth taking a look to see if they're, if they're serving our needs as good as they can, or if there's another company that's available. But it's the, it's not just the, the future casting, but it's also the day-to-day, are, are we, are we seeing our needs being met in the best way possible? So that we're maintaining those systems appropriately.
And then there's tools out there that let you do remote management, that you can kind of monitor everything all at once, and... So that's something, too, that could probably bring out, just make it easier to, for ongoing maintenance.
I agree.
Okay. Review and assess staffing resources, who's that?
So that's me again.
That's you again, Governor Joe?
But actually, I'd like to combine the, the last three. It's the resume and assess staff and resources, the talent management slash succession planning, and additional staffing needs. So this is all to say that, that right now, and it's no, no secret again, much like IT, that, uh, cities are really competing for staff, and there's a, there's, it's still an employee's market right now. And as you know, and, and actually, at our last, um, study session like this, you know, we talked individually about sort of, I, sort of our, our staffing issues within each of our departments, and it, it's not like they've gone away. These, these tools would allow us to, again, like IT, assess our personnel and see where our needs are, right? When you're in the corporate world, you make changes very quickly, and they happen very quickly. In our world, a lot of times, we have to go to council for certain things, and, you know, and then we really have to study it. That's just what public agencies do. Corporations are, are slightly faster in that regard, right? And there's good reasons why we have to be careful in what we do, right? There's labor, associations, and those sorts of things. But this would allow us to really assess our personnel and our operations, to make us more efficient. It would also, uh, help us be more marketable, right? Competitive against not only our twelve comparable cities, city council comparable cities, um, you know, you, having better qualified candidates in a pool for a position is just better for the city. Now, you could say, well, you know what, well, let's, if, 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 you know, the, I'll just use an engineer, you know, we'll let the engineer go to a different city. That person has the institutional knowledge, okay, we'll, we'll teach, and we'll, that learning curve, and, and all that goes with that. But it's not just that, it's the delays in projects that you have, or services that you're providing, uh, to, to a resident or a business. Our product is not, you know, selling shoes or clothing, our product is quality of life for the residents of Seal Beach and the people that visit us. And, and so by having qualified, as we mentioned earlier, uh, having really qualified employees enhances what we do. And if our goal is ultimately to, to provide the best customer service and quality of life, if that is our product, then we have to have good employees to do that. And so this is, these are some of the ways in which to get to that point, where we're really looking at our operations, we're looking at our marketability, and we're looking at retaining good employees. And I, I think, at least, I think in listening to our executive staff, those are, those are important goals to reach for. And you as coun- councilmembers are the policymakers, and can provide those tools to us so that we can get as that. Because I think it's, right now, it's so competitive, it's really competitive. You know, we're, we're, we have a, a lot of recruitments, probably the most recruitments I've, I've seen in my time here in Seal Beach. And, and that's no fault of our own, the market is dictating the push and pull of people, right? We have ceilings because we're a smaller city, you know, there's, uh, maybe geography is a lot better for an employee. Uh, there's all kinds of different considerations that people have to make in order to make those types of decisions. These are simply tools that help us attract qualified people that we think we can, we can professionally develop and achieve a lot of the goals of where we want to get to. The things that you're going to be dotting up right now are the things that we need to achieve, and, and we can change those a lot sooner if we have good people.
The, the other, um, did you have something to? Oh, I was going to say, the, the other part of this exercise is to provide direction and focus to the staff. What often happens is, you know, there's too many big things that you want done, or you change your mind every, every ten minutes, because now, now somebody else has said something, and you, councilmembers can, can run off in forty different directions, and then nothing gets done, because the direction is changing... done, because the direction is changing faster than the staff can get the work done. So part of this process, regardless of the money, because that, we will talk about that, is, you know, if we were talking about your legacy, like, what are the things that are important to you to get done in the near future, knowing you've got some fiscal constraints? Yes, sir?
I'd like to pose a very sensitive question. We've been told by our staff that we are not overstaffed, and the people that we have working for us are hardworking people, and they're not being overpaid. I'd like to know if there's consensus among our city council that that, in fact, is the case, in light of the fact that we have many residents who claim that we are way overstaffed, that we should cut the salaries of all of our people by anywhere from God knows what to God knows what, and that they're sitting over there at city hall not doing anything. So I'd like to know, do we have consensus among our council?
Repeat the question.
Do we believe that our city is not overstaffed, that our city employees are hardworking, that they're not sitting around, and that they're not overpaid?
Four things.
Yes.
It's a lot of things, that's okay.
All in one.
You know, I mean, just asking.
No, that's a good, fair question. That's a tough question for council to ask while you've got your staff sitting here.
Or you might answer your question.
But I get the sense that's a very uncomfortable question, but let me, let me, let me ask it this way, what's your all-fund budget, start with? Forty-two million, okay. This team is running a forty-two million dollar corporation. Oh, that's a big, that's a pretty big corporation. And they're not making one thing, right? They're not producing one widget. They have every area of expertise here that you have to have. You know, are they overpaid? In my, in my opinion, haven't seen a lot of salaries in a lot of places. No, they're not overpaid. But you don't really care about my opinion, you didn't ask my opinion, so.
Let's take the four things over to the top.
All right, what's the first one? Is the staff overpaid?
That was the fourth one.
That was the fourth one? All right. No, councilman, first one.
Overstaffed.
Are we overstaffed?
No.
I, what my frustration is, is that the state is requiring so much that we have to, staff has to, has to work on that, and being that we're a small city, we're a big city, has the same job as a small city to do that, but we're required to do all this stuff. So if I say overstaffed, I maybe mean overworked, whatever, but I would hope that wouldn't continue forever, because I don't think that's sustainable, because nobody wants Alexa's job, because there's two. I've heard it multiple times, and nobody wants to have Alexa's job. So that's my, you know, that's where I'm coming from, not that, I love our staff, and I'm not, I don't, I don't, that's not the problem.
Carol, if I can?
Yes.
If I could just add to that, maybe to help you, and again, going back to the tools. So that's a difficult question for the council to answer, right? And so what these tools are doing is really helping you get the data to make a more informed decision on whether or not we are overstaffed through an organizational assessment, whether or not we are paid more than other cities through a classification and compensation study. So those are the tools we need to identify, right? So it's, it may be a little bit unfair of a question for you, because you want the data in front of you to basically ask yourself, okay, well, I see the list of comparable cities and the different positions, are we paying at a higher tier than other folks? Then you have the data to make those type of decisions.
All right, what was question two?
You just answered for me.
Okay. I guess overpaid is one.
Yeah.
Is the staff is overpaid?
I mean, we hear this every day in emails from our residents, that the way, as an example, the way to not have to raise our water and sewer rates is cut everybody's wages at city hall and lay off some people that we, that really aren't even necessary.
And then, and then, okay, so a resident comes to and says that, and you say, okay, what service would you like us to stop? Right, that's, that becomes the question, would you like us not having parks? Would you like to not be throwing on your water?
Their opinion is, you'll still do the things that are necessary, they'll just have to work a little harder. I'm telling you, that's, that's.
No, I, I.
Those are the answers that I guess.
I've heard that, I've heard that before, and it's.
It's a complex question. It's not the way to save the financial future of the city is not to cut everybody's pay. That's an absolutely absurd concept to me. I appreciate our staff enormously, these are talented people, and they're trained for their work, and they do an exceptional job, and they are responsive, and I appreciate their people, and I wish I could single out a few of them and pay them more, in all honesty. But, you know, we have these labor unions that we get to work through, and so, I mean, if you do this for one person, you can't do it for other people, you have to do it for everybody, and all these other things. I don't think anybody is per se overpaid, but I don't think everybody deserves a nineteen percent raise because inflation kicked up. I mean, I'd be very uncomfortable with that. I mean, we have to be, as a council, as a city, we have to be prudent, and we have to be careful with taxpayer money. But, you know, I can't imagine, just because somebody gets paid X, and we want to pay them X minus a hundred thousand a year, that we should get rid of them, is, is the height that's considered, and I've had people suggest that. Do you have any idea how much global revenue gets paid? It's kind of like, yeah, I do. You know, the answer to the problem is not cut people's pay, that increases the problems that we come to the city, and we're going to have the right people and the institutional knowledge to save these, to save these cities. Was that you?
No, it's my chair.
So I don't see.
Anything else you want to add, Joe?
Yes or no on that one?
What were your other questions, Joe?
I think you have it written down.
Oh, all right.
There's a, now, if you didn't have her, I wouldn't know what your question was. Our city employees are working, and the last question is, are they not sitting around?
They are right now.
They are right now, one day out of the end.
Women is working.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make one comment, I know Barbara works really hard, she sent me an email at eight thirty last night.
So she was, so she was working, she's got software, she writes the email at five.
Oh, then she makes it seem like, ah, okay. No, she doesn't, if you had a good IT system, she could, but.
I send the emails to Iris for come next morning at eight o'clock, and I get an answer in two minutes.
Yeah.
So.
They're pretty, they're pretty responsive.
That's, that's two and four dollars. Yes, sometimes I accidentally.
Okay. All right, other questions, comments? You know, Patrick, Patrick's point is good, if you really want data, you do peer cities, you've got 12 of them already, you could do, those are expensive to do, we're talking about dollars and cents, and so it's like, so you want to do a peer, a peer comparison of your 12 cities for a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and then find out that, yeah, your staff's over and underpaid based on your peer agencies? Then, now, now what do you do with that information? Right? And now, the worst thing you can do is do a class and comp study and not follow it, because it's out there for the employees, and it is a morale killer. I don't know, I know that from experience, I didn't do it, but I just, I've heard it. Okay, so, yeah, forty-nine point four million dollars worth of requests with three point six million dollars of revenue enhancement, a little bit out of whack. This big block.
So we have a total ask of forty-nine million is the ones.
So that's, that's all the cost of all the projects we've just been talking about, that's the cost.
Just the ones we've talked about.
Just the ones we've talked about. This doesn't include anything that you might want to add to the list. And then, we've talked about, you have the opportunity to possibly add about three point six million dollars of general fund revenue to your budget if you were to do both tax, tax, sales tax measures.
We have not talked about potential charging for parking on Main Street.
Nope.
That has not been brought up.
That has not been brought up.
And ad hoc process going on, and hopefully that will exit with a, and that's about, I think, three point eight million dollars over five years, somewhere in that range, seven hundred fifty thousand a year, somewhere in that range. Let's come up with that number, huh? Huh? I looked at a number from the city last year, heard it was seven hundred fifty thousand, it's only July, and I have to put it forward, it was seven hundred fifty thousand. And even if it's only three hundred thousand, that's three hundred thousand per year.
Okay. All right, now we're getting to the audience participation part of the day.
Carol, before you go there, I could just quickly add, because I want to make sure, I know you indicated, of course, this is, this is what your staff team has been working on, and I want to make sure that it's clear, this isn't a wish list from us, we heard some of the things that came out of your discussions with Carol and Steve about what you were looking for, forward-thinking staff, wanting one big project to focus on, so I think there was kind of two and threefold in terms of what our focus was here, not only highlighting from our perspective what some of the higher priorities are, but also maybe some smaller projects that we know that we have at least some funding for to get something done. So I want to make sure that it's clear, this wasn't us coming with a line item wish list or a dream list for you, it was hearing the feedback from you, taking that back, and trying to really come up with, like I said, highlighting what some of the higher priority needs are, and what some projects that we felt that were at least obtainable and feasible, given the parameters that we've got with our, with our revenues, and then clearly talking about the big elephant in the room in terms of the set aside for the pool fund, as well as peer restaurant funding. So wanted, before we move on, wanted to make sure that you had, you know, a general grasp of how we came up with a list of items that we've walked you through today.
And the one thing, thank you, Joe, for that, writing that classification, so, we've talked about all that list of items, I have written these on these big poster boards, everything we've talked about I wrote on the poster board. Is there something we missed? Is there some project that you want us to consider during this process, something that we haven't talked about? Now is the time to speak. No, there's no other, no other project you all want to think about or have considered? No?
They stopped at forty-nine million.
They stopped at forty-nine million, okay.
Yeah.
All right. This is phase one of this project, process. What we're gonna do is I'm gonna give each of you six dots. On the three, do not put any dots on the revenue measure, we're gonna talk about those separate, that's just for separate conversation. But there's two pieces in the paper of this. I want you to take your six dots and vote once only for one item. You cannot put all six dots on one thing, can't say, oh, I want this thing really, really bad, and put all six dots, you can only put one dot per project. And then, once you do that, we'll talk about what happens next.
We don't get dots, right?
No.
Okay.
No dots for you.
These are just projects.
These are, these are, those are absolute projects that are on this list that we just want to.
So we're not talking about using part of the money for, part of the money for something?
Nope. All, all we want to know is, what do you want? I'm gonna give you ten minutes, you need to stand up out of your chair.
I see more than one color of the city.
You guys all have different colored dots, so.
Can they call a friends? You can call a friend. You can twist each other's arms, you can do whatever you need to do.
And I think for the staff, you guys can have some cookies and snacks back there while they're doing that, if you want.
Awesome.
That's okay. Okay, thank you for, thank you for doing that. Really interesting fun fact here, we went from forty-six million to fifteen point six million, where you put your priorities up there. So the, the only priority I did not include was the Bridgeport alleys, because it only had one vote, your other ones had fives and fours. So to me, that, that shows, that is consistent, there are five votes for the Lifeguard headquarters, obviously, that's your most expensive one, license plate reader system, and the Eighth and Tenth Street parking lots. Those are your, those are your top three priorities.
The IT master.
Oh, I'm sorry, and the IT master plan, my hand was wrong. Patrick, please, sorry. I apologize, and the IT master plan. So those are, those are your top, those are your top one, two, your top four, four significant projects like that, that's a pretty good place to focus your energies on for the next year. Okay? And part of the next, part of the next conversation would be like, we'll speak and talk, we'll go back and talk about the set aside for a little bit. Your other consensus kind of projects are the storm drain, debris capture at Old Town Bridgeport, the gas line from a golf pool, got four votes, those two got four votes. Is that what, is that what you expected, council? Are you surprised? No, not surprised? Okay. All right, so, as, I'm not gonna, I'm, well, I'm gonna speak for Joe. So Joe's gonna focus her energies on Lifeguard headquarters, the Eighth Street, Tenth Street repainting, the license plate readers, and the IT master plan.
And I think for simplicity, we probably, Joe, could we not tie the Eighth and Tenth Street lots to the Lifeguard headquarters?
I bet it would make sense to me.
Okay.
Okay. So they're gonna figure out how to do all those together. But one of the things that we want to just talk about briefly now is, there's two, actually three revenue measures that are gonna be up for your consideration here in the near future, or could be. The parking lot, the parking on Main Street, as to whether or not that becomes paid parking or not paid parking, you are going to decide that as a council in March or April, according to your city attorney. So, so that decision is gonna be coming before you soon, and I would rather not have that discussion with you now, because now you're talking about how you're gonna vote on something that's later. So, so we're gonna put that aside, you guys will make that decision, but I think today we've really kind of set the stage about what your financial needs are, and then you can make that decision once you have all the information from your consultants and staff back in, and you're, all of your consultants. So the things that I, that, you know, one of the things that Barbara just shared with me as we were at the break was Catherine Lu, who did your last sales tax measure, correct? Yeah. There's 70 cities in the state that she's helping with sales tax measure in November. So you would not be the one and only city in the state doing this. Kind of by, kind of by a show of hands, this is not a vote, this is only consensus, are you interested in having the staff pursue a revenue, a sales tax revenue in November? One, two. One, two, three, four? Okay. How about the oil tax measure? One? All five? Okay. You have all just made your staff very happy, and I appreciate that, thank you. Because, because you provided some consensus direction. And now what they'll do is they'll come back to you, um, you know, probably quickly, and may, and have you do some actual voting on that with more background, more detail, costs, everything that will, everything that you'll need to make a decision on. Joe, did you have a question?
This is on the, uh, the oil tax, are we including or looking into the, um, that?
Yes. Yeah, there's two, two components of it that our former consultant has raised. One is sort of closing the loopholes that we pursued in litigation with CRC to make it clear that drilling from outside of the city, in the city is subject to a tax, and it's a much higher tax than one penny after the first three hundred barrels. So they'll, they'll align it with, the concept is to align it with what it began to if you were in. And then to make it clear that gas is also subject to you.
How old is that code for that one sign?
Uh, isn't it decades? Like, really old?
Thirty or forty years old.
My, my understanding is it's not even enough to like cover the cost of charging the tax.
May I get a council clarification on, um, the sales tax measure? If we were to move forward, do the B B to move forward on polling, that is, under the city master's planning authority, um, approximately thirty thousand would be in that right away.
And that's already been budgeted, that's in the budget. Money for, to do that.
Yes, that money has been set aside from the, um, as you can remember, the revitalization funds, we talked about polling, the fifty thousand has been set aside for that, so we can get that immediately, um, and again, under this authority to sign for that, so that would be the direction we would move forward.
Do we need to pull for, pull for those? Or can they do, can we do that together?
I think so.
Yeah, yes, they can.
And then in terms of retaining outside assistance as we did, um, prior to the measure B B, would we, we need to look at and determine whether that's within staff signing authority or we need to come back to council, or regardless, if you want us to come back to you, um, for approval, even if it is within our signing authority, but timings of the essence, so we don't have, now that we've gotten, you know, clear consensus and direction, to Shelley's point, July's not that far off, and there's a, a lot of work that has to be done to get us even prepared to do that.
And not that I don't support the idea of getting that half percent, at least prophylactically for the city of Seal Beach, but at the same time, when we're talking about doing a poll, increasing sales tax and doing that near term, we are also in the midst of the water sewer, uh, for Puffle, and we also have the parking on Main Street for Puffle going on. So I mean, it really is like three, can we wait until we're done with water and sewer to start polling, or is that too late?
Would it take time to put the poll in, in place? I mean, so I think.
I mean, it's faster than you'd think, you usually can get it done in a few weeks, but if you wait until April, I mean, then you're talking about the results in May, and then it's, you're, you're kind of up against it whether, as to whether you have time to put it on the ballot.
You get my point though, right? It's like, uh, which kind of stinks.
Is this going to ballot in November?
It's the council.
Talking about trying to do, and then leaving it up to the voters, it's just that we don't want to do something that's not likely to pass. I like the idea of tying, tying the, um, can that be in the poll, of tying it to a project like the Lifeguard headquarters or whatever, because I think that would increase your chances of getting people to support it. Do we have to decide right now what that would be?
Usually what the pollers, pollster will do is also poll, what are your priorities for the city? And then you'll get information that says, here's what the residents think are the most important. Because one thing you have to remember with a sales tax measure is there's a general tax and a special tax, and the general tax is fifty percent plus one of voters, and it has to be available for use for anything, it's just general level. A special tax is dedicated to a particular thing, yeah, but you have to get two-thirds plus one vote threshold, so it's very much harder to get a special tax.
So if we identified Lifeguard headquarters in our description of this tax, and if this is sales tax?
So if you were to do a sales tax measure specifically to fund the Lifeguard tower, that would be a special tax, and you'd have to get two-thirds of the voters to approve it. What typically a ballot measure will say is, for a general taxes, in order to fund transportation services, street maintenance, lifeguards, police, you know, and city, and other governmental services, you know, you want to increase the, the sales tax by how?
B B was probably marketed, funding our, our public safety and police.
It was.
Which we did.
No, that's.
Because they just marketed.
We were able to.
They marketed that.
And of course, the council can say, we want to use the money to do these things. You're just not legally bound to do it.
If I may, council members, so, uh, we're waiting, right now, there's seventy others, it's just this person is representing seventy other entities that are taking a margin of the ballot, um, in November. So it'd be, um, many among them instead of just us standing out, so that's a good note, seventy is.
In front of, or, in front of Seal Beach, where the only.
Yes, in front of Seal Beach, you are correct, but overall.
Last week, the mayor's elected Academy, and I mean, a lot of towns are in the midst of wa, water and sewer rate studies, and so there are a lot of towns dealing with that right now, and the fact that Moscow has got a water and rate study going on doesn't mean for us here, you know, doesn't equal ours.
Westminster just approved this, sorry, council just approved it's got a, in Westminster.
Okay. So let's have a, let's have a discussion about your set asides. Again, non-binding, but now that we have a little bit clearer direction of where your priorities are, would you like to have staff look at reallocating some of this money to some of your, um, your number five priorities? And you've got, I'll go from smallest to biggest. You've got seventy-five thousand for the IT master plan, you've got three hundred and twenty-five thousand for the license plate reader, you've got eight hundred thousand for the Eighth and Tenth Street parking lots, and then the big elephant in the room is thirteen point five, like green quarters. So, one, one thought could be, um, Barbara, would you guys ever consider bonding for the Lifeguard headquarters?
Yes.
Okay. So one, one thought could be, it's just a thought, is you could take, um, and you have four for the pool, right? Four for the pool and seven, ten for the storm drain. You've already allocated four point three million dollars for the, a pool, you could take two hundred thousand of that allocated specifically for the gas line. You could also, I mean, the IT master plan and the license figure, those are relatively small ticket items that you could take out of that five. Barbara, you want to do some, start doing some math for me if they make decisions?
I am, I'm.
Getting my black products, you don't know what you're going through.
Uh, yeah. So I think, I think what would be, what would be instructive to the staff is, let's talk about your priorities out of the five points, Barbara will start with the five point seven, and we can, if you want, yes?
Can we add the eight hundred thousand part, plunging part of this discussion?
Yes, we can.
Okay. All right, so we'll add, so you do the math on all of this for me?
Yes.
All right.
I just want to note that some of those allocations were looked at for parks and other items, but, um, yes, that is at that council's discretion, that might be.
Okay. So, out of the top, out of the number fives. Well, let me ask the first question. Do you as five council members want to reallocate this money to current projects that you have more interest in?
All of it?
All of it? Not some of it?
I'm not ready to say yes.
To do a bond for Lifeguard headquarters, do we have to put any bonds in, put it on payment?
We'll have to pay for consultant fees and, 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 so we should prepare for that, yes.
And that, and to issue debt would have to be approved by the voters?
Yes.
Issue debt, yes.
You have to.
Yeah.
Can we talk about not setting this limit?
Oh yeah, I absolutely, I'm, I'm totally with that. It's, it's the fact it says community pool right there, and it's kind of like a community like Seal Beach should have a pool, and I'm not sure if we can bring that money up and then come back and do a bond out on a pool or something like that, but the broader question I have is we have a, a lot of money set aside in capital, uh, investment money, not just community pool and peer restaurant. I don't mind giving up the peer restaurant money, that's kind of like, okay, fine, that's not, but that, but there's a lot of money in there that could be, or might be, or may not be, I'm not sure what, but there's a lot of money held in capital investment, uh, of projects. And so instead of just saying, we're gonna pick on this one right here, let's see who else we can pick on before we start picking. Does that make sense?
Do you have a five-year C I P? Were you budgeted?
Yes.
Is it longer than five years?
No, it's five years.
Five years? And in that, in that fi, well, uh, a five-year C I P is only good for the budget year that you're in. So you're only, you're only allocating money for the budget in the year that you're in, even though you have a plan to fund the rest of it. So you have not funded the five-year C I P. I was, correct me if I'm wrong. Okay. So you could have three million dollars worth of C I P budget, that's a.
Talking of money that's already been set aside and is sitting in the bank, I'm not talking about.
Are you talking about your other reserves?
Yeah, the other, what other money do we have, are these the only two things that, uh, capital projects that we have cash in reserve for? Or are there other capital projects that we have cash in reserve for that could be included in this conversation?
I don't know the answer to that.
That's a hard decision, um, because these projects have already begun, they're in different stages of projects. I think this might be a table top item.
Now, I went down, I went through that entire thing, you know, for today. Quite a few, but I don't, it's like, we pulled out peer restaurant, community pool, discrete from all of the other money that we've already set aside. Am I the only one concerned about this, if I am all?
I think what, uh, I think what she's saying is this is outside of the budget.
Yeah.
Like that, these are outside of the budget. So we're already budgeted for our standard.
He got a check for a million four from the insurance company, and that money's been sitting there while we are making a decision, which we were in the process of making. If we want to have food service on the pier, some people say, no, we don't, we don't want it, other people say, yeah, we can open a restaurant, we're willing to do this, or we need to do that. So that money is, is not budgeted for anything, other than the fact that it came from insurance for the pier. The community pool, it was accumulating money.
It was cashing up funds.
Right. That was to be used to build a swimming pool, which started out at, you know, six million one, and then we talked to the Navy, and now it's eighteen million. So now, I think we're at a decision point is, in the foreseeable or even unforeseeable future, are we going to be able to afford to, by paying cash, writing a check, charging it or bonding it, build a new swimming pool in town? My opinion is, it doesn't look like it, but by the same token, I would do everything we possibly can to keep this pool that we have by applying more band-aids, and so I would propose more than the two hundred thousand that you need for a gas line, let's figure out, you know, what can we do to repair the deck and make it either work better or look better, and some kind of dressing room facility, or drink, whatever else we need, to, that, that's our community pool for as long as it lasts.
Or just have a little bit more that's kept aside, so if we do have another need, we don't have to come to camp, it can be, the money can be there as part of this fund.
On the bulk of it.
Yeah.
You know, let's, let's find a more reasonable use of that money every disney time.
As it magically disappears before it's already.
Council member, if I, if I may add, um, you had mentioned you had gone through the C I P budget, and the C I P budget includes all of us, this right here is general fund unrestricted, a lot of these capital projects in here are restricted, right?
Are restricted, okay.
They're restricted revenues, they only be spent on this, this year.
Do we still want to go through this exercise? A little bit? Get, again, these numbers aren't hard and fast, but you know, you, you, I heard the conversation, there's two hundred thousand, and all of a sudden it's like, well, yeah, but if there might be a little bit more, then maybe we could do this, right? So, um.
Let's get the pool in shape.
Okay.
Whatever that costs.
Let's get the pool in shape. Eighteen million dollars. Let me ask you this. Let's pick the low hanging fruit. The IT master plan license, there's four, there's four hundred thousand dollars there. Is that, is, and you could, you could say, look, we, look, we did this, right? There's, those are things that we, that we could do. And from a, you know, these, the, um, the storm drain and the repaving, you have enough money to do that, and you would still have money left over. You still have money, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, well, um, the license, the, um, storm drain system, there are four, the Eighth Street parking lot, there's a, there's a million five. Again, leaving you money, some discretionary money to kind of do those things, but one of the things that I, we heard is that like, let's do, let's finish something, right? Let's get something done and something out the door. So, um, that's just one way to kind of think of that, that would give you some wiggle room for this. Frankly, the Lifeguard headquarters, you're gonna have to have completely different, separate discussions about this. This is, this and the pool are such big ticket items, you're gonna have to figure out with your staff how to get that done, and it's not gonna get done with your little six mil, I had to say, I had to say little six million dollars, right? Like, I have all this money, I have like a dollar and a quarter, but with, you know, with six million dollars, you're still not even halfway there to Lifeguard headquarters. So, there's gonna have to be a different kind of solution. But what can you get done next year with some of this money? That is one way to approach this, with your top, kind of your top, your five, your number fives and your number fours. Any, anybody want to throw out some numbers about what they'd like to do or how they'd like to do it, and Barbara's gonna keep track of this, and it's with the, the management analyst, who is amazing, by the way, thank her, she's making notes for me. All right, let's do some, go ahead.
Well, I would suggest that we, at least talk about, when do we want to talk about food service on the pier? Because you've got a million four that's sitting there, and if, if we wind up with a consensus of whether, you know, we involve the entire community again, uh, to where people say, yeah, we want food service on the pier, then we can look for a plan that we can afford, that's well within that million four, and it turns out that the consensus is no food service on the pier, then you have a million four to do with, as we please, with these other items right now.
And, and the other issue with the, the pier is, according to your staff, you're looking at, you have a million four, but it's gonna cost you three, 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 three million twenty-five thousand. Is that?
For a full restaurant.
For a full restaurant.
Oh, yeah, so, no.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, so, no, we, I mean, pretty much, I mean, that was, at the time that we were getting ready to make the presentation public, with the boards and the renderings, you know, that was gonna be presented with a, but we can't afford it notation.
Okay. So you're talking about something like a snack shack, or some kind of small food service, or ice cream stand, or something, right?
As I said, you know, one of the ideas was this, uh, using shipping containers, à la, or Long Beach, what's it called?
Steel.
Steel, yeah, steel craft. And, and these guys that we consulted with came up with a, an interesting look that had, you know, two twenty-by-forty-foot container modules with a view down the center, to be offset, and then a glass-in eating area. And then, those two twenty-by-forty-foot modules could be outfitted any way that either we or a vendor wanted. Or you could have two different services, you could have bacon tackle, you could have snacks, you could have sandwiches, whatever. I mean, and this, you know, sort of the concept we came from what I saw at Pismo Beach, they had right airstream trailers that are permanent. And, you know, their menu for the food service was pretty extensive. And I talked to their city manager, he said that it was quite successful at Pismo. So, but again, we were just on the verge of fleshing this out, but I think, you know, there's a million four that we should, you know, make a decision on.
And nobody voted for it? Nobody voted for the restaurant on the pier as a priority?
That's because it says restaurant on the pier. I was torn by that one, but I said restaurant on the pier.
If you said food service, I might have-
Okay, all right, that's why we have this discussion, right? Just to, just to just get some clarity. Lisa?
So, um, I thought from our discussion last year, there was, was an issue with coastal commission with shipping containers, is that what the case is?
Coastal development permits, but I think somebody said that it would require so that-
At least be able to do it. So then, I'm assuming if we have a restaurant, or a shipping, or whatever we have down there, I'm assuming we probably have to have a bathroom somewhere?
Yes.
So, so what would the cost be to, to get back to that point, to finish it from there?
At the, I can just say, at the time, I'm talking to consultants, so we're going back, what, two, almost three years? To, to build out that, including the, like, really super cool bathrooms, portable bathrooms, it was like eight hundred thousand. So, it's a million two today. Four million, three ninety-five, six thirty-eight, but-
I, 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 right when I started is kind of when that was happening, and I would say I was just ballpark. Even, even at that time.
Yeah.
Well, the upside of doing that, I mean, it would be a revenue stream, so, so pretty much take the whole, whole point for, to get it ready for shipping container, that is, that is-
Councilmembers, you want to see an example of this locally, just going by Garden Grove City Hall? And they have steel craft there, there's a half a dozen of them. So if you want to see a local example of it put in play, it's right on the corner.
I had a question, I drive past, to visit my daughter, I drive past this steel craft in Long Beach all the time, and they always look busy. But it, it, they also look like they're sort of like, kind of generic, so then, if one restaurant, like, another could just move in, which I kind of like the idea that you wouldn't have to go through.
Absolutely, you just, you just cut holes in it.
Yeah.
You know, for window, or serving window, or whatever you want. Long Beach, what I think has, one is tacos, one's beer, one's-
Coffee, you got, you got a lot of that.
And then you, you lease it, or have a contract with a, with a vendor, and they put in whatever kind of cooking facility they want, whether it's a stove, or a grill, or a priory.
What, what about this, what about we put this back on the table? We let staff come back with some kind of cost estimate on that? That wasn't one of the priorities, so, but we'll, again, this is not in stone, right? This is just kind of that conversation. Other than the restaurant on the pier, are there other? I don't want, I don't want to open up the door again, because I feel like I've already closed it.
Get some more dots.
Yeah, no more dots. Are you interested in funding next year, in next year's budget, the license plate reader, the IT master plan, and the repaving of the ten lots?
Yes. With this money here?
Yes.
Plus the ARPA.
Plus the ARPA money. Well, and then you're gonna have to reallocate the ARPA money that's already been kind of set aside, right?
It's unrestricted.
It's unrestricted, okay. So you want to use the ARPA money first, right? Got to get rid of it anyway. So, use ARPA on-
Do the parking lots?
The parking lots, there's eight hundred K right there, that matches beautifully.
And when is the, when is the pier, when is the, the other coordinating, is it the pier?
With the, with the Lifeguard Headquarters, can you, I don't know if you can wait to have the pier lots paved until you can wait, until you can get the, till you can get the Lifeguard Headquarters, I don't know if that makes-
It's probably longer, faster, um, depending on how quickly we want to move. If the direction is to allocate funds and move forward as fast as possible, possibly. I, I think that there's some economies of scale of carrying the two together. Um, and if there is that palette for it, I'll have to look into some alternate ways to just keep that parking lot in some kind of driver's bold faith, knowing that it's still gonna be a couple of years out before we get a new project at the end of the day. Because of the ADA accessibility and the building, it may make more sense to tackle those together. So, um, so if the direction is that we want to put these as the priority and find funding for it, then we'll look into those options and, uh, from the back of the house, for consideration.
Yeah, just to dovetail on that, Jill reminded me that at one point, the city had formed a public finance authority that had the ability to issue debt without, um, voter approval, so we can look into that. I don't know that that changes the analysis, we can still issue bonds, it's just how the process would go. So we'll look into that as part of the Lifeguard Tower project.
And just as a side point, when is our final payment? Is it being paid for several years?
Barb, did you get that?
I'm sorry.
Just here.
What have we done paying on bonds that have been in existence for several years?
I love that question.
We've already made the last.
Yes.
The link part, here.
Three hundred and fifteen thousand.
So-
Prior years.
It's like-
For higher, the prior years were higher than that last year.
My power's paid off, I can buy a new one.
Well, as of now, it's the-
The porch.
Yes. May I get clarification, so that eight hundred thousand is coming out of the-
You're gonna add that to that five point seven? No, you're gonna add the ARPA money?
Which we did, which totals to five million, one ninety-five, because I removed the restaurant.
Okay.
Oh, for now.
For now. So I removed the restaurant for now, which brought us to four point four million. I added the eight hundred thousand for the Eighth Street parking, and the eight hundred thousand for the ARPA. So you're at four point three nine five.
So you're at four point three nine five.
How much do we set aside, Band-Aids?
How much do you want to set aside for Band-Aids?
Pool Band-Aids.
Pool Band-Aids.
Band-Aids?
I mean, like, we do the gas line, and then how much do you want to save just for the next thing that breaks?
What, I mean, you're talking about a dressing facility, do we have some idea, are we talking about another tough shed, or bigger tough shed?
Well, I, I guess that's ultimately the question is, do we buy two seven hundred dollar storage sheds and let people use that, or do we build a purpose-filled, uh, lovable one?
I mean, we're still talking less than fifty thousand dollars, I would assume, to build, I know.
But I respect that, I think there's, there's too many variables to actually have an answer to that.
I, I think I would need to come back to you with some Band-Aids that actually make sense. At the end of the day, we don't know how much longer this pool is going to be able to last. Even that we could get into the area, are we certain that the pool is going to still keep up and functional for five more years, or ten more years? We're unsure of that, so, so, um, we need to be sure that if we do invest any more, that it makes sense, and that it's from a temporary standpoint as well. So, I, I think that we'll have to work with the chief to come up with these options, and, uh, these different must-be Band-Aids, I guess, that we can work with.
Great. Are we looking at potentially setting anything aside here, um, to start the Lifeguard Headquarters conversation? I'm seeing some yeses and some nothing, so-
Does it give you the bond, how does that work?
I'm sorry?
How does the bond work?
I'll let Barb kind of talk about that, but I'm just, before we get seen, I, I feel like we've got our, our high priority project set aside, and yet we're, we're still setting aside money that we've got available now without even having a conversation, unless you're looking to bond the entire amount of Lifeguard Headquarters, it seems like it would make sense. We've started out with four and a half million set aside for a pool that's no longer a priority. We can, you can utilize some of that for, you know, immediate needs, but we should be, in my opinion, having a conversation about some of the balance of that money, if we are gonna focus on, which is the direction you've given us now, moving forward towards a Lifeguard Headquarters project. So Barb, in terms of a bond-
The only, um, first, I would like to, to now, to have a comment for a sec, uh, the revenue initiative would have to pass. If the revenue initiative doesn't pass, you can't put the city cap on. You have to have a steady income stream, showing that to come through, through your consultants, and through the bond analysis, or we won't be able to do that bond for long.
Yeah, you're basically going to, it's just gonna be like a revenue bond, showing that you've got the revenue to pay the monthly, your annual-
That we're backing that part of the stream, and so we have that with your settlement.
And you'll, there'll be a consultant hired to basically prepare the prospectus, that'll be, come to the market, that'll help price your, your bond.
Is that a move by year term, or month, for, for years?
We could do specific years, but-
We was, we were on a fifteen-year bond for, for the fire station.
Maybe that's something that we could come back with to the council, to say, here's what the, say, Seal Beach has in terms of bonding authority, here's the process, and here's what it would look like for thirteen point five million.
I don't know how bonds work exactly, so this might be a stupid question, but can we just, do we look at two for one? Do a pool and the Lifeguard in one bond, so it's a thirty-year term?
I don't know if we're printing that.
I mean, that, you can do it for public facilities, it's just a matter of, do you, are you gonna be able to show the revenue to pay for whatever the premium is on that bond?
Would the sales, the millions and sales tax, are they sufficient, to meet that bit?
Ongoing, you have to remember, the city's facing other pressures as well, as our expenditures are increasing over the years. Right, so we are looking at both our operating budget and have, so the balance unit, we have to study.
Yeah, those prospectuses are really, really detailed and show, you gotta disclose every possible impact on your ability to pay for the, uh, the bond. It doesn't mean we can't do it, and it also just could affect what the price of the bond is, as opposed to whether or not we can actually issue the debt.
We would have to have free cash flow in our operating budget to be able to support a bond issue of this sort. And we don't have any quote-unquote free cash flow in our current forecast or budget. So we have the ability to finance the Zippo right now, whether we bring this money in, uh, we have to have the cash flow to be able to go to the street and sell the bonds, and they have to be able to see our cash flow, and they have to be able to know that we are, are able to, under a current operating budgets, able to support that bond issue.
Yeah. So I think, I think Barb is probably right, that the tax measures kind of goes hand in hand with, we don't have an operating budget right now, with free cash flow on it.
All right, how about this as an alternative suggestion? We'll let Jill and Barbara and the staff go back and think about kind of what you, what you've been talking about. What does the pier restaurant look like? How much money do you want to set aside for a pool or a Lifeguard, Lifeguard Headquarters? You know, are you gonna do a bond measure, right? So you're gonna have all this stuff going on through July, so how much of this money do you want to use for other things? You want to fund the IT master plan and license plates, or one of the CIP projects? You know, are those important to you, based on your other competing needs? But let the staff come back with a plan, based on our conversations today, about how the, how the mechanics of this are gonna work, how the financing of this is gonna work, where the funds are gonna come from. Because I think it's, it's unfair to you and unfair to the staff for us to be kind of giving these snap decisions, you know, trying to make these decisions, right, in this, in this forum. So I think if they can go back and do some research, I mean, Iris and the chief understand kind of Band-Aid in the pool, let's look at the, let's look at the pier. Think about our options for Lifeguard Headquarters, what does that look like, what does the revenue measure look like? You're gonna have Main Street coming back to you to have a discussion on in the next, you know, a couple of months. So you've got a lot of moving parts right now to, to really think about it, and I don't want you to make decisions in kind of a vacuum. I want you to have all the information you need to make really sound decisions and be able to ask those questions.
Can I make a suggestion? I mean, it's the other, because we're not doing the parking lots, because we're waiting, right? That's, that's what you said, we're gonna wait on parking lots until we get the locker. So, in the meantime, I mean, we have the ARPA money, I, my suggestion is do the golf pool, do the license plate reader, the storm drain, and the IT master plan, that's what, about one point three?
One point four seven.
And take, you know, the rest of the ARPA money, so we've got to, you know, move six hundred thousand or so out of the community pool, right now, please.
I think, I think, okay. Well, you guys now get kind of what, what the decision points are gonna be, right? And I think, once everyone comes back with some better, real, more realistic numbers, I know these are probably pretty realistic, but, you know, let, let's everyone refine them, let's make sure we're understanding, now we understand better what your priorities are, and what parts of those are. I think that will work. Any other questions or comments about this? Jill, have I covered everything that you, you feel like you got good direction?
Absolutely.
Executive team, you guys feel like you have good direction, don't need any additional questions or comments, or, oh my gosh, what do you really want me to do? None of that? You go home, you go, gosh darn, what am I gonna ask, right? Okay. All right. Council, anything else we, you feel like, you feel like you're on a good path here with the priorities? Yes, sir?
We're, we're talking about blowing up this pool, and here's the, the pool money, and, gosh, I have this vision of some ten-year-old kid, you know, with dreams of the Olympics, and, and no pool to practice. And that kind of, that kind of bothers me, but it, what, what bothers me even more is if we take this kind of money, which is hard assets we're talking about, and put it into studies, or put it into something that's basically, you come out with a document at the other end, and those kind of things, I should, I, I think, anyway, I think the IT master plan is, we're referring to those should come out of our operating budget, we should pay for those, as opposed to taking hard asset money and putting it into a study where you come out with a document. Not that I don't look, I put my yellow dog next to the IT master plan, but the concept to me is we have hard assets over here that we're talking about, and we have soft rings over here, which are, it's not an even trade.
Councilmember, if I made eight hundred thousand, this one for environmentalization plan, uh, those, those IT master plan and the other ones that, uh, the city manager has mentioned, is that, that would be sufficient area that we can-
Okay. So, point well taken, right? You know, it's, it's just an operating expense, we don't need to be touching this stuff, you want-
As much as I want to spend that money.
On those things.
Maybe not even on those things, but it should go hard assets to hard assets, and the sooner we spend it, the more money we're spending power we want to have.
All right. All right. Everyone else feel like they got something out of this? Been here a long time. You did the guts. All right. The other, the other part of this that I, I want to share is, this is, it's taken us a long, it's taken us all day to get to this point and I appreciate the effort and the thought and the, the conversation because it really has, um, provided some really good, solid feedback to the staff and that's what this is really all about. And you, you all know what that is now too. So when that other shiny object comes your way, you're going to go, eh, but wait a minute. We're going to focus on doing, we're going to focus on getting a lifeguard headquarters and we're going to focus on, you know, doing some hard infrastructure improvements because that's what we, we decided is important. Jill should be, um, reporting to you on a quarterly basis or some other kind of basis, where you are with, with your priority projects. How are they going? Are they in design? Are they, you know, what's the timeline as those timelines move? They should be kind of a, a regular report back to you and to the community. And try to, try to not blow this up in the next year. Try to let staff, give staff the time and the opportunity to really get this stuff done and, and they can. But they can't if you go, oh no, but I want you to go over here now and I want you to go over here now, right? So give them the time to, to get those things done that you have, have decided today. If something comes up that you, that is not planned for, but that really is become a priority for you and the community because we don't know what's going to happen. These are kind of some of the things that you should only change this plan for. A natural emergency, a pandemic, a new outside, outside funding opportunity. And sometimes that's really, um, key for like Iris's shop because she may get some funding for, all of a sudden they open up funding for alleys, right? And she just goes, oh my God, we have to get some of this money. And so she goes after it and, and she shifts her priorities because that's something you couldn't, you couldn't pay for otherwise. So we have to kind of be aware and be nimble when it comes to things like that. If you're going to work with another agency on something multi-agency, community safety issue. And changes in laws or mandates, which again, that's kind of an ongoing thing. Every year they want to slap a bunch of new stuff on us for fun. I kind of wanted to put this on the bike rack because these are things, and get your kind of feedback. These are things the five of you told us that you wanted to talk about and I don't know that it's really necessarily appropriate for this conversation, but I wanted to share it with you to see if there's a consensus that you want Jill to kind of bring back. Who, you know, um, if you'd like to have a further discussion about this. One is, um, define who we are and what are our central purposes. That, and this came up kind of in the context of that's, uh, you, you guys are a small town, right? You're a small town and decisions have historically been made as, from, from a small town perspective of, can't change anything because you'll destroy our small town charm, you know? Well, that, we talked about this earlier, right? Change happens, right? We're in the twenty first century. You have an amazing, you know, downtown area. Kind of north of the four oh five looks frankly just like everybody else, right? But, but south of four oh five or south of P C H in particular looks, it's very unique and it's very special and, and I understand why you want to preserve that and so, but that has also hindered your ability to bring in tax revenue from sales tax because you're not making decisions that that while residents may dislike it, it may be financially beneficial for you. So, um, that was kind of the context of that conversation. Part of that was looking at your mission, is it your mission statement that's on your wall in council chambers? Like, when was the last time you looked at that as a council? Should it be changed? You know, does it need a refresh? That's something to think about and so, um, I just wanted to share that with you. Communication is still key. I think, I hope we helped inform you today that there are a lot of avenues. It's not perfect. We can't force people to look at our social media and all those other things. But the staff is continuing to try new avenues to keep that communication going. You know, if you've got a question, ask. I think that's, um, or if, or if a resident does not have the information you need, you know, provide information for how to con, ask City Hall, right? Type in an email. You'll get an e, you'll get an answer in free age or faster if you just call Patrick Druck. You know, just kidding. You know, we've kind of talked about your finances. That's going to be an ongoing discussion you're going to have as you go through this process, um, in the next year. Loss of cordiality, uh, between council. Again, I hope that first part of the day just gave you some nuggets of things to think about when you're interacting with each other and with the public. And yeah, we can have different opinions and obviously you all have different opinions because you all are your own people and that's exactly the way it's supposed to be. But how we talk to somebody matters and the words we use and, and the tone of voice that we use. It really does matter and it's important. If you want something done as a council member, you have to have at least two friends on the council. And when I see, when I've heard and seen councils split three, two or five, or, you know, four, three or whatever, the people, the people on the short end of the stick can never get anything they want done. It really become, they really become ineffective. And you got to let it go. You've got to, you've got to build the bridge. You've got to, you've got to be able to work with all five of, all four of your other colleagues as, that is key to being successful as a council. Otherwise you'd just be known as the council that fought all the time amongst each other and got nothing done. And I know none of you want that. And the other thing is we just can't look to our supporters. I know you all get elected by districts. But you were elected to represent twenty four thousand people in all districts and all, in all parts of the community. You can't forget that and you can't forget that also the, the people who never show up to a council meeting are just as much your residents as the people who show up. And that is, that is really a, a key point is that you always have to be thinking about the big picture. So, Jill, I can throw these on a bike rack and then you've got, you can bring those up later if there's an interest in the council for doing that. But I did want to share that we spent the time and energy and you spent your time and energy sharing with us and these were some other thoughts that came up that were kind of outside the, the process and I just wanted to share that with you. Next step, we're going to do a summary, um, report uh, of today and kind of how we got here and, and what the final decisions were. And I wish I could remember your management analyst's name back there.
Lauren.
Lauren. Uh, Lauren, um, is taking notes for me. She didn't know that in the beginning, but she's doing it for me too. And, um, we'll use that and some of the notes that Steve and I, Steve and I have taken to kind of put together a report for you, kind of memorialize what kind of was, was decided today. We do have an evaluation, uh, piece of paper. I'd like the department heads as well as the council to, to to fill out for me. Um, it does help. I took those, um, comments that I got last year. I tried to improve this, so since I've been here for two years, you know, am I going to come back for a third? You guys will let me know that. Um, but I have, I have certainly enjoyed the day. Um, before we close out, Jill, is there anything you'd like to, like to say?
You know, I think every year this seems from my perspective to get better and, and more valuable and, and yet the structure is always a little bit different. And so, um, again, want to thank the council for continuing to invest in this process. I mean, without the, the support of all five of you. I mean, first of all, we wouldn't be here. Second of all, it takes all of us working alongside together. This is, we, we only have the opportunity to do this once or twice a year and really there's a lot of work that goes into it, but we embrace it because I think all of us collectively understand the value of it. So I want to thank you. I know there were some, some different discussions today. And at least the input that we got from all of you, the consensus, I mean, this is a lot of work for us to do. But we're ready, willing and able to tackle it because we all, we're all here for the same reason, um, for our community. So, thank you.
And that, I'm not leaving with our favorite lifeguards.
Thank you, thank you for your day, for the day, for the time, for the energy. You know, when you talked about consultants, you know, you really have to, you have to babysit consultants. This team babysat me as well. I take a lot of their time and energy and the result is the workshop that you've seen today. So it really is a team effort. I don't do this in a vacuum. The council conversations were just fabulous. We really enjoyed talking with you. And hope that this day has really brought you, um, kind of what your expectations were and brought you to a good place for starting out the twenty four, twenty five this year.
Could we maybe get some roundtable just?
Well, how about, how about one word about one, one thing you got out of the day?
And we could even include our support staff in the audience if they'd like.
Oh, the support staff in the audience. All right, support staff in the audience. Uh, we're going to start with you. How about that? We'll put you totally on the spot.
Me?
Yeah.
Counsel, I don't want to work here. I was just, it's my first time here, so it's good to see the, uh, the collaboration between council, the department heads and the consultant house. You know, strategically planning the, the goals throughout the year and kind of seeing, uh, where, where, where that, where that trend's at and where council puts the priority at, so.
Thank you. Lauren?
Yeah, it's also my first time, so thanks for including me. And I'm super excited. I've been taking notes obviously, but also writing down a lot of ideas. Because as a small city, we have unique challenges, but there's also unique opportunities. So I'm excited.
All right.
First timer as well, thank you for having me as well. Um, it is really nice to be able to see behind the curtain and all the work that happens before the work happens. You know what I mean? And the collaboration between council and, um, the executive team.
Yeah, you, you spin that first.
I, I would say the same. This is the first time I've been to this meeting. And, uh, I get to see behind the curtain a little bit and some of the planning that happens over the long, but this has been eye opening and exciting and promising and hopeful. With what I heard in the collaboration that we all hope to see really make those goals come true. So.
Sean, sorry, Sean.
Almost got away.
Sorry.
I read a lot about productivity and I really believe in the concept of you get more done by focusing on less. Just meaning that sharp focus on a few things at a time. So I just seen an exercise like this, especially with a group of people to just kind of pick those topics to really go in on. Gives me confidence that, you know, we, we can get some stuff done this year.
All right, which of the people am I going to pick on first?
Oh, you're going to go here, aren't you? If you know me, I, I really like sports. So a sports analogy is like this. How we see this is the council, our board of directors, Jill, our general manager. We're the players, staff, and the residents are the spectators. And so this workshop is our spring training. So it gives us a good game plan going into the regular season for the next six months. Those are just my thoughts.
That's a good one. All right.
I, I think it's really, really, um, great to see us come together and, you know, we have a lot of these conversations separately to get together and have it together as a group. So that then, um, whether there's agreement or disagreement, there's at least a mutual understanding of what's happening and what the landscape has before us. And so I think that's, that's, there's a lot of value just in that because it offers a starting point to even have these conversations and it takes a lot of work just to get here and, and so I think it's a great place to start.
Thank you, Chief. I have chiefs all over the place. Chief.
So we just had a very similar conversation at O C F A. So, um, we were getting buried with priorities. Yeah, I kind of like your list up there. I mean, it, it is long and extensive. And to Sean's point, I really, that really resonates with me. Sean is, um, it, we're becoming difficult getting things done, getting things moved across and finished on. So we really, uh, we had a get together later day, uh, earlier this year and focus, okay, what's the three top priorities? Let's focus on those and don't take on more until we get those done. So the five's up there, our own personal five. So, for me, that's the value of this is to Sean's point, let's get some stuff done. You know, let's quit kicking the cans down the road, focus on some things that are achievable, the smart adjusted, specific measurable, attainable, realistic timely, right? Let's get those done. We've got a year to focus on those top five. What can we get done and finish something and, and be effective. Well, that's what I appreciate.
Chief.
I didn't have time to come up with a sports analogy. I do want to say thank you to the council. I, I think that clarity for us as staff is so important and it's takes a little pressure off to know, hey, this is what they want us to do. So I think that's great. I also appreciate, um, and Nick here, he was excited to be here, which kind of got me excited to be here. So it's always good to see how the sausage is made.
Iris.
Hi, well, I don't love sports. I don't play sports, so I'm not, you can't, you can't, you don't have to follow three cheese either, but, um, the engineer in me loves clarity, loves structure, loves doing things and producing. So this program that was created out of the collaboration and the hard discussions today makes me just really excited. I, I think that all the wheels are turning and I think everybody else is too on how to make this all work. So, um, I'm really excited on what, what's to happen.
What's up?
Um, I, of course, appreciate being here and part of this process, but you just watching the five of you and listening to what you've had to say today sort of gives little pieces of insight about, you know, kind of how you think and I appreciate you sharing that because that also, for me at least, makes my job easier. Like, oh, okay, this is what I need to think about when I'm doing X or, you know, whatever. Okay, so thank you. This piece of, that, that was a, this is a good insight.
Barbara.
First I want to say thank you. This, what a blessing that you've got the executive team, our city manager, the consultant, our council sitting at a table today and we made a lot of hard decisions from this morning until now. We have direction, we have insight, you know, what we're doing next and the collaboration and the respect and listening that you've shown us today is, is, I've never seen anything like it, the partnership and I just appreciate that.
Thank you. Mia.
I just appreciate staff's time sitting here. They're always valuable information and I appreciate so much all your work. I almost never get a chance to sit and talk with council members because of the Brown Act and such. I can Brown Act with one person or whatever. But outside of council meetings, I don't get a chance to do this. So it is really wonderful to get to, you know, instead of just a short answer, which you're like, you're like, well, what do you mean by that or whatever? You know, you get a chance to hash something out. So I do appreciate all the, all the, uh, all the input from, uh, my fellow council members and, uh, of course, uh, turning in city managers there, so.
Excellent. Nathan.
My thanks to Jill and senior leadership that, that were here, uh, for being here with us and the other council members as well. City government should be transparent to the people who live in the town. They shouldn't have to think about the trash getting picked up or the sewer working or we've got a lot of stuff kind of popping in our city right now. If we're going to add sales tax on top of that, that will just be one more. And, and it's just a gnarly mood out there as in leisure world anyway, because everything that's happening to them. Seems like people are focused on local government more than that. They shouldn't have to think about us. They shouldn't have to think about picking up the phone and having a police car respond very quickly or a fire or having issues at the beach or any of the other things that we do. All of that stuff should be transparent to people and that's because we have to do our jobs and do our jobs right. Right now, a major concern to me is the five year forecast. How are we going to get, keep this city in the black? So, I mean, but this is a good session and these are practical. I'd like to know where some of the money is going to come from. I love the idea of a bond issue. That would be great. But we got to come up with cash flow to support a bond and we're in a budget process right now and inevitably we'll, we'll likely spend everything that we have just to, just to come in in the black. You know, that to me, for a city like Seal Beach that is a wealthy town, we should have plenty of money. We don't. So we need to figure out how we get more money. So.
Lisa.
Come on, what Shelley said, I, I really enjoyed getting to know everybody, all the fun facts and, uh, I think it just fosters a, a stronger relationship amongst all of us. And, um, I definitely have, I always walk away from this having a much greater appreciation for what all of you guys do on a daily basis and it's, it's a lot and you guys are appreciated and, um, and you guys are over.
Thank you. Tom.
Well, thanks Caroline and Steve for doing an outstanding job today and, uh, you know, relaying our concerns. I think you did a great job and staff is just tremendous. I disagree with the slides about unqualified. I don't think that should have been even on there. But, uh, yeah, I think we gave some good direction. There's a lot more focus than last year. There's a lot more focus than last year. I'd like to see us get some of these projects done with this money that keeps depreciating each year because we're not spending it.
Okay, thank you. Jill?
I feel that the amount of collaboration today far exceeded my expectations. And I appreciate the fact that we were all very forthcoming. And I think we, on the council side, really did focus on what it is we need to do. And staff was more than helpful in answering questions and helping us remain focused on those areas that we can affect immediately or that we have to do further study on. And thank you guys for corraling the kitten.
It's an art, not a science. Gloria?
I'd like to thank council and Big City as well as city manager April. And I think this is one of the best ones for me. This is probably, I think, my fourth or fifth one. I can't remember. I just celebrated my fifth anniversary with the city on the 20th. And this is also an opportunity for me to not have to click and take a vote and take in the information. So I really, I really, really got a lot of information today. So very informative, a lot of collaboration. So I'm just thankful for the information.
Thank you. Nick?
I'll put it in a legal standpoint. To Shelley's point, the Brown Act is a very important tool for transparency, but it often limits the ability for the council to get together and have sort of an informal discourse. So putting these types of events together, whether council can share their views in a little bit more of an informal setting while still letting the public to be a part of it is a very good tool.
Thank you. Last words for you? No?
Yeah. You and Steve have any last words?
Well, I did all the talking today, so I apologize for that. Thank you. I, you know, when I, as a former finance director, when I see $46 million worth of projects and you got zero to three million, maybe, of, you know, revenue to support that, my heart starts beating faster. I'm like, oh, my God, how are we going to get there? But you guys did an amazing job, and I really appreciate it. And I hope that the governance and the leadership discussion that we had kind of just helps you continue to frame your relationships with each other and the community. You guys signed up for the worst job ever. But, you know, the rewards, the rewards can be great. And to serve your community is a high honor, and it's a privilege. And people have entrusted you to make the right decisions. And they chose five really good people. And I know that working together with you and the team that you guys can accomplish all of this. And I'm hoping I get to come back next year and see what you've accomplished. So thank you for your time and attention today. Thank you for the team for all the support to getting me all this information so we could share it with the council and for Jill for calling me up again and saying, hey, I need some help. And with that, we're 10 minutes late, but you are free to go. Thank you so much.